I'm going to call the meeting to order. But first, before we get started, I just want to say, I think I speak for the council when I say that we are all just so saddened and heartbroken even really over the death of Mark Johnson. And we just want to recognize, you know, that that is just so painful. And, you know, he knew a lot of people in the community. And I want you also to know that, so I was invited to take a, by one of the residents of the Pioneer Street Apartments, to take a tour of that building and meet some of the residents there. And I just want to extend an invitation to the council, if you want to come with me on that, just let me know. Love to have you along. So I also just want to say that we as a council are not in a position to speculate as to whether or not that was, the police action was justified or not. But I do want everybody to know that we are, as a city, committed to a full and rigorous investigation being done currently by the state police. I know there are some people here who have a lot of thoughts about and feelings about this and would like to share that. So as we go into general business and appearances, if there's anybody specifically who wants to talk about that incident, that would, let's do that first, I think. And so, and just so you know how this is going to go, we'd love to hear your thoughts and feelings and questions. And then, just so you're aware, our police chief is not, he's not around today. So we're going to be collecting your thoughts and questions and then probably having an item on the agenda sometime in the future to talk about those things. So Lawrence, I know you wanted to go. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council for having me here. My name is Lawrence Seiler. I'm a huge advocate, my wife and I are huge advocates in the field of special needs with television show called Special People, I mean, sorry, Ableton on Air, which is on Archimedia. But just to say that I live at Pioneer Apartments, and so does my wife, and even though we did not know Mr. Johnson completely well, he was nice to us and, you know, timid man. He didn't like crowds, et cetera. But what needs to happen, in my opinion, is that there needs to be more crisis intervention with Montpelier Police Department. And just a thought, that if you guys on the council can make it a ruling that all, anybody that wants to work for the Montpelier Police or the state as far as the police should mandatorily get training, either through Washington County, NAMI, Vermont, or any of those organizations that offer this training. This should not have happened. According to some people from Washington Counties that I have spoken to, who've been on my show numerous times, de-escalation does not take, the police have spoken to Mr. Johnson to try, he was on the Spring Street Bridge and then pointed the gun at the police. But de-escalation does not take five minutes. It takes longer than that. Counseling somebody takes longer than that. So there needs to be more de-escalation techniques.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Particularly, I also just want to note that I neglected to do, to review and approve the agenda. We'll do that after, I suppose. Any further comments particularly on this incident?
I'll lower it for you.
So I come here tonight, I too struggled with Mr. Johnson's death. In addition, a friend of mine died over the weekend as well. So it's been a tough weekend, last weekend. But it was interesting, I was asked by someone on the street, he seemed to think I can fix things, so they said to me, what am I going to do about this? And I said I would give it some thought and come in with some suggestions, nothing here tonight. But what I will say is that I will be part of the effort to try to learn from this incident and move forward. We have, the one thing I will do tonight, may not give me brownie points, I'm not looking for it, is I'm going to say that I am, I continue to have full confidence in the Montpelier Police Department and their personnel. It was not an easy situation on Friday, I'm sure. And I want to say what we already have in place, from what I understand, we do have crisis intervention, we continue to have that in Washington County. It's known as Team Two, they're working on it. And it was just in the newspaper the other day. So he said this is not going to be an easy thing. And I will continue to educate people and of course go on Lawrence's show, which I have done a series of interviews. And so I give my condolences to Mr. Johnson and his family, and I also give my support to the Montpelier Police Department and all personnel involved that morning. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to discuss this particular topic? Yeah?
I have some thoughts that I wrote.
If you would say your name for us?
Yes. I'm Peter Harris, I live on East State Street.
Thank you.
I'm alarmed by two police homicides in as many years, and I'm wondering about the direction of the piece of a backwater that I have called home for three decades. I understand Mr. Johnson had no history of violence, yet was shot with a long gun from a distance. It will be particularly cruel if we find out that Mr. Johnson was actually trying to get into his own apartment. Corrective action as to police procedures and protocols should flow from this death, even if the policeman is exonerated. Thank you.
Thank you. Other thoughts on this particular topic?
Stephen Whitaker. Stephen Whitaker. I second Zach's comments. I do have faith in our police department, and yet that leaves room for mistakes to have been made. The de-escalation, the compressed time period, the use of a long gun, there's a whole lot of questions that arise. Training and technique and protocol for inviting more experienced mental health counseling in is essential. I have told people for decades that I live in Montpelier because we don't have these kinds of shootings here. And it's tragic that we're joining the ranks of national without prejudging whether this was, this could have been avoided, in my informed opinion. I've circulated and making available some more copies of the, a photo of Mark. He's one of 10 children from Vermont, and there's only one left, you know? But these are available if people want them. Is this your only non-agenda item?
Nope. So I was going to shift, so, and then if you have other things to say, oh, we'll have a separate time for that, too.
I would encourage, I would encourage the city council to take whatever action is possible. I filed a public records request, I know some media organizations have, to release information as soon as possible, specifically Cruiser Cam, Schematic, et cetera. This may be a storm, and it may take some time to pass, but the sooner we get started the later. If it looks as if we're going to, the better. I mean, if it looks as though it's going to take six months or a year, that's going to not be good.
Elizabeth Parker, Hillside Avenue. I think one of the reasons I live in Montpelier is because there's a deep sense of caring that we all have for each other. And I wanted to say that I was very impressed that on Saturday I saw two police officers who I've never seen knowingly at the market, walking through the market. I, as I remind everybody, I'm car liberated, so I walk everywhere. And as a consequence, I know everyone downtown. You just, it's so small, you get to know people. And I, I love our police department, I think that they do so many things so well. And my one thing is, I encourage them to walk more, so that they really get to know everybody. Because if they had been downtown and they would have known this man who was so vulnerable and so sweet, and things would, might have gone differently. So that's my one suggestion. Thank you.
Anyone else on this topic? Okay, well, thank you all for, for your thoughts. Any councils want to comment on this particularly? If not, that's fine. Okay. Any, besides this topic, any other general business and appearances issues? Now would be an okay time, Stephen?
Again, Stephen Whitaker. I'd like to read into the record, there was an incident a few days ago up on the trail between, from Memorial Drive and Main Street, or Northfield Street headed up. Two old buddies who went to high school here with Bob Watson, et cetera. One now lives in Vietnam, the other lives in British Columbia. They came here, they decided to go have a beer up on the trail, and they were accosted by four police officers. They were, you know, flashlights, prepared as clubs, computer data terminals to run their license, et cetera. I asked for the records. I got the reports. Their reports reflected no, you know, burglar on the loose, suspects resembled, anything like that. This was basically something that needs the attention. I'm going to read into the record the response I got from one of those people. "Steve, thank you for your thoughtful email. The conduct of the MPD officers was indeed suspect and likely illegal. The cops had no probable cause to interrogate Bob and me and to demand that we show identification", which they then used to search their database for any excuse to place us in custody. "They also lied to us. They claimed that we were, they were asked to inspect the area to investigate, quote, 'a loud disturbance', end quote. They also claimed that we were on private property, quote, 'owned by a woman who lives in California', end quote, who's requested their help in, quote, 'keeping out vagrants', end quote, on her property. We now know, as Bob told me before, we went there to drink a beer that the property is owned by National Life. Bob should show up at the meeting tonight if he remains indignant at the cops' disruption of our otherwise wonderful reunion. I'm off to Vietnam for a few weeks to resume my volunteer teaching duties and have little interest in fighting small-town police misconduct. If the recent unwelcome intrusion by the cops somehow affects my pending departure, my attitude about this subject will change dramatically." I think y'all need to be very engaged with...
I just want to interject, I just got a note that there is no audio on the streaming.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to repeat myself. But I think I am raising the caution as I do regularly. I also discovered from talking to the homeless, some of the homeless folks, that a former officer who retired last year is making appearances in plainclothes with badge and gun. And on one of those appearances, he kicked the homeless people's money bucket. And I raised this, I think Chief Fankos is aware and did laudably express concern that someone might be impersonating a Montpelier officer who no longer works here. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Okay. Oh, any other general business and appearances, an item otherwise not on our agenda? Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm not used to the city council. My name is Erica Rail. I'm representing the Vermont Center for Independent Living, as well as people with disabilities, as well as myself, so many different hats tonight. Some of you know me. So I'm actually here to talk about the homeless task force that's been talked about in the paper.
So if, if the item that you want to talk about is on the agenda, then we will get there and you can talk about it?
I didn't know if I wanted to talk tonight, this open forum or not? Okay, so I can talk later.
Yes, yes. And so this time is for any, I should have specified, I'm sorry. This is for talking, discussing any items that are otherwise not on our agenda.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no worries at all. It's all good.
Not used to your format.
No worries, it's all good. Okay. Any other discussion on items otherwise not on our agenda? Okay. All right, so just reviewing and approving the agenda. I don't think there's any changes, I think there's going to be an amendment to the consent agenda, but we'll deal with that next. Otherwise, I don't think anything has been taken off or adjusted. Am I correct about that, Dean? Okay, great. So we'll consider the agenda approved without objection. So on to the consent agenda. Jack?
I'd like to take item F off the consent agenda.
Okay. Any other items? Okay, is there a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Move it. Second.
Oh, I'm assuming without item F. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. So the consent agenda is approved, and we're going to take up item F right now because Michael is here. So I don't know if John, you want to take this one, or if we should be inviting someone up?
Sure, I'll just mention real quick, and I apologize, I had put it down as an item for discussion, so I would not have tried to slip this one by because it involves a policy issue. The policy for vendors has been they have to be gone by 10 o'clock, so this is someone who came to me requesting to set up a vendor space to sell food 10 o'clock and later. So obviously it means both the spots out front are available, and that's where he'd like to be. And, you know, I was like, well, I don't know, it's a policy decision, so come to the city council. So that's, that's the genesis.
Any questions from the council? Thoughts? I love it.
I'd like to hear from the vendor to have a little more detail.
Sure.
Michael Cantalupo from Northfield.
Keep close, real close to the mic. Michael Cantalupo from Northfield. Hi, welcome. I like to serve food after 10 o'clock at night for all the patrons coming out of the bar, so they can get something to eat instead of driving to McDonald's or anywhere else, sober up a little bit. My thoughts were from like maybe Wednesday to Saturday nights, from 10:30 to maybe 1:00, 1:30. I'm not going to use any generators, so I won't disturb any of the apartments or people around, you know, just propane and, they can alternate food each week, so they keep coming by to get something different.
And do you have, you have an estimate or any prediction of what kind of noise you would expect to be generating?
None, really. I mean, it's just running propane.
Conversation between...
Yeah, conversation between people, maybe them sitting there eating. It's no, won't be no more than them staying outside of Charlie O's, having cigarettes and talking on the side of the street.
And Charlie O's is open until 2?
2.
So this would even be before that?
Well, I'd probably close down around 1:30, quarter or two. It depends, I mean, if someone was drunk and wanted to eat, I'd serve them.
I do have a question also, John, these permits are a year, like, he would have to reapply again next year or not?
You have to, I mean, they're not, they're four-year period, but it's like all the dog licenses, it closes up. So he'd have to reapply by the end of next April. But it would go on, yeah, and I'm presuming if you all went for it, that I'd just charge him the standard vendor fee, just at a different time.
Donna? I'm sorry, maybe I just didn't hear you correctly. How many nights a week do you want to be doing that thing?
Wednesday to Saturday.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Friday, Saturday, yes.
My pause is that we just have downtown housing right now that we've increased, and so I really want to give people a chance to give us some input on that. It's all just balancing that, people living right across the street.
So would your proposal be that we not take this up tonight?
I could set up in front of the courthouse, where the other guy sets up during the day, it's not a problem.
Out in front of the courthouse? I'm trying to think if that's further from housing.
Yeah, that's, there's no housing over there.
What do you think, Donna?
What's the level of activity over there?
Well, there's a bar on the side street, there's two bars on the side street over there, and then you get Charlie O's, and then the other one over there, you know? So there's 1, 2, 3, plus 3 penny, 4, right in the walking distance. You know, they got that club on the corner right there. Yes, yeah.
If we, yeah. If we said yes tonight, are you ready to hit the ground running? Are you like all set up now?
Not tonight, I was waiting for approval before I went and got my insurance. So maybe like 2, 3 weeks.
Would you be, maybe try to crack this nut here, would you be, if you wanted to try it at City Hall and we got a lot of complaints, would you be willing to move if we asked?
Absolutely.
So, so you're not locked into a location, and then we can see how it works?
Yeah, I mean, I couldn't even get permission to go in front of Charlie O's, who, or right on the side right there.
That's not really one of our approved vendor spots.
Over here's better.
Oh, you mean, you could probably get a permission, you'd have to get permission from the property owner in there. They do that, then you're all good, so.
The Jamaican people are there on Thursday, Friday.
Right, but at night?
As late as 10.
Any other comments from council questions? Jack?
I, I'm with Donna. I would feel more comfortable putting this over to our next meeting, giving people notice that this is going to be considered, so people in the neighborhood who want to be heard would like to, would have the opportunity to do that.
Other thoughts? Glenn?
Since we're giving opinions, I think I am, I think I would rather let him go ahead for now and see if we hear from folks. I feel like the likelihood of really loud disturbances is slight, and feels like a friendly setup. And also the bars are, as we've already said, already open past when he's going to be open, and people are already out on the street.
I'm comfortable with the green light tonight, especially with Bill suggesting that you'd be amenable to moving if there are some noise complaints.
Absolutely.
Does anybody have a motion they want to make?
I would move that we approve the permit request, and I don't know, John, are the hours spelled out on other permits?
It's under the, yeah, under what we've got in the city, I think the hours are something like, I can't remember when they start, I think it's 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So that's what makes this one special.
Okay, so I do want to have like a cutoff. I was a bartender when I lived in Italy for a while, and, you know, we were open till like noon from the day before, and reopened at 1. So I just want to make sure that there is like a cutoff time, like, and I don't, I think 6:00 AM is way too long, but, you know, I don't know, if 2:00 AM or 3:00 AM, no later than 3:00 AM.
So, motion is no later than 2?
No, I would say no later than 2.
Second.
Wait, I'm sorry, was there a second to that?
Yeah.
There was, okay. Further discussion? Jack?
How would you, I'll move that we, to amend the motion to make it for a one-month period, or make it subject to review during the permit period, so that we can review it and terminate it or modify it if problems develop.
Does that already exist, though, in the authority that we have to issue? I would assume that there's got to be a revocation procedure, so why would this be any different?
It's a license, licenses can be pulled.
Yeah, so I, I'm just, I'm curious, why would, why would this be any different than any other vendor permit if issues arose that violated?
I don't know, what do our regulations say for pulling licenses?
It's not specific, so it's really at the, it's going to be at your discretion.
Um, there are motions?
I don't believe, I have to double check that, but I don't think.
Is there a second? Okay, so the motion, or the amendment feels, but I have a second. Further discussion on the original motion? Okay, and you're open to feedback if you need to move?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
I just want to serve the bar community after the restaurants close, you know, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to have high prices either. You know, it's like 5 bucks, 6 bucks, 8 bucks.
Okay. Any further discussion? Right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great, thank you.
So I have to ask, are you a chance insomniac? Do you want to be on the loose?
Trying to get out of the restaurant business. Trying to get out of the line cooking.
Okay, I hope it's a success and a reasonable noise, okay?
Thank you. I wanted to go to an Italian deli in Montpelier, so.
One thing at a time.
Yeah, this is great. All right, thank you again. So we are moving on to some appointments. So the first one is to the Housing Trust Fund Committee. I believe we have a number of recommendations for that. Committee is to consist of five people, appointed by the council, one member of the city council, four people from Montpelier, two members of the committee should be members of the Housing Task Force, and two from the public at large. So I think we have, sorry, help me out here.
So we had two people for each.
Two people for each, okay.
So Richard Amor and Amore, and Rick DeAngelis for members of the public, Mary Huber and Brian Evans is the Housing Task Force reps, and then the council, which I think is...
Caught up there. All right, so are any of those folks here? Like to introduce themselves? Is there a motion? Oh, we were going to do all of them. Do you want to do all of them at first, and then we'll have an executive session?
I don't know, I was, I was going to move to, since we have the exact number of nominations or applications as we do vacancies, I was going to move to appoint the applicants.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you all for your work. All right. On to the Planning Commission. So there we have one vacancy, and Marcella Dent has applied to be on it, and I think Marcella's here. Do you want to come introduce yourself? Uh, so there we have one vacancy, and, uh, Marcella Dent, um, has, uh, applied to be on it, and I think Marcella's here, do you want to come introduce yourself?
Hi, my name's Marcella Dent, um, I've been in Montpelier for about two years now, and I work for the State Agency of Natural Resources, and I'm also a master student at the University of Vermont. And, um, I'm just really excited to, um, for an opportunity to both apply what I've learned in school and what I'm learning, um, in my, beginning of my career here and in service of Montpelier. So, thank you for your consideration, I really appreciate it.
Any questions for Marcella? Okay, great, thank you. Shall we do the development, you've already donated this one next, doesn't matter?
Happy you were.
Why don't we wait and we'll just do that? Yeah. All right, and so, uh, for the Development Review Board, uh, we have two vacancies and, um, I think one applicant, Michael Lazarcheck, and I don't see Michael here. Um, so, can't introduce himself. Is there a motion regarding, um, either or both of these, or do you want to go into executive session?
I will, we appoint, uh, both of these applicants to the positions that will apply for.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, again, thank you for your work, um, looking forward to working with you all. Okay. Uh, so now we have an update from the Energy Advisory Committee, and I know Kate is here, so welcome.
So I'm Kate Stevenson, I'm the Chair of the Montpelier Energy Advisory Committee, um, and I was asked to come in and just give an update. We're shooting to give updates a couple times a year to the council. So I submitted a couple of bullet points just to give some idea of what we have been working on and what is coming up. And I'll just run through those and then take any questions from the council if you want to know more, we'll see if I can answer them. But we've been moving forward on, in terms of municipal projects with the revolving loan fund. Uh, we completed a number of projects over the, the winter-spring, um, including LED lights in the City Hall Theater, uh, weather stripping, City Hall windows, which was a big project, um, and then some work at the fire station on the district heat pipes and some controls. And, uh, so our next project that we're working on for the revolving loan fund is looking at all the overhead doors. Turns out there are something like eighteen different overhead doors if you count up all the buildings, and, uh, a lot of them don't seal properly. So we're, um, have been working with Efficiency Vermont to do some blower door testing of those doors, and then we'll do insulation and weather stripping and come back and, and measure the energy savings. And if it's significant enough, we'll go ahead and do the same thing on the other doors as well over the next couple months. Um, in terms of the wastewater, uh, Water Resource Recovery Facility, we're really trying to work on, um, starting to plan for Phase Two, which is what do we do with the methane once we start producing it, uh, now that they're under construction over there on, on Phase One. So, um, just starting to crunch some numbers and look at what the possibilities could be for that, um, energy that will be produced. Um, on the school front, we, um, were able to meet with Andrew LaRosa, who's the new Facilities Director for the school district. And, um, we'll also be going to one of the upcoming, uh, school board meetings to talk about kind of how we, how we, as the Energy Advisory Committee, can collaborate with the school district on plans for how do we get our three schools to net zero in the next ten years? So, um, that's underway and have made some connections there with Efficiency Vermont. We got good news about the, um, there have been some issues with the solar panels at the wastewater treatment facility. They haven't been working properly for the last couple of years, but it sounds like they got fixed. So they're not, it's not a huge energy producer, but once they're on the roof, they might as well be working, so I'm glad to see that that's been repaired. We are really looking forward to the hire of the new, um, Position, Facilities Director, Energy Wood, I don't know what it's, exactly it's going to be called, but, uh, looking forward to it and, um, want to help in whatever way we can with the hiring process. And, uh, good news from Police Department was that, um, over the winter, you know, they installed heat pumps, um, to replace their aging cooling system. And we got the bills back, uh, electric bills back from May, June, July, and it basically cut the electric bill in half, um, for those months, the cooling months. So that was exciting, and we'll, we'll do some more analysis as we get more data back. But, uh, we weren't really involved with that project, but glad to help track the energy savings. Um, and then, you know, last time I was here, I think we were talking about the greenhouse gas emissions tracking and, and the new program software that we're using to do that. We haven't done a whole lot since, since that May presentation, but, um, the next step is really getting all of our fiscal year nineteen data into that software so that we can, um, start doing some of the forecasting features, which I'm looking forward to, but we just haven't quite gotten to yet. Um, so I know one of the topics that was specifically on the agenda for this evening, um, is around policy and the development of an energy efficiency ordinance, um, that was passed through the charter change in November and then through the legislature in May. Um, so we have a, a working group, um, that includes a handful of members from the Energy Advisory Committee, some folks from Efficiency Vermont, Richard Fazy, uh, from Energy Futures Group, who has basically gotten some, some outside funding to help us as a consultant through this process. And so, you know, we've been meeting a number of times with that working group to start the process of developing, uh, ordinance, uh, not even language yet, but kind of concept for what we want to, um, propose to the city. Uh, we've been looking at precedents from other municipalities, uh, we had a meeting with Realtors, um, I think there were fifteen or so folks that showed up for that, uh, to get their input because they're a critical part of this process. You know, what, just to reiterate, what we're looking at, um, is specifically around disclosure of energy use at time of sale for residential buildings at this point. So specifically for, um, single-family and small multifamily homes. And so the next step is we're going to be having a public meeting next Tuesday, starting at six, right in here, uh, right bef, prior, just prior to the Energy Advisory Committee meeting, um, where we are also going to present some of the same information we did to the Realtors, take questions, talk about kind of the history of how this is, this energy labeling has developed over time, um, and get feed, get more feedback from the public as we go into actually looking at what an ordinance language could look like.
Yeah, Donna?
Can you share a bit about the response from the Realtors?
Um, I can a little bit, I wasn't at the meeting, so I can just tell you what I, what I heard. And Anne was there, so she can probably chime in if she, uh, wants to, but, um, you know, I think some skepticism, some concern about, um, that this is just one more thing that could slow down a sale, or, um, you know, and, and questions about whose responsibility really, was it to do the disclosure, you know, who does that fall towards? Um, one of the things I didn't mention is, um, one of the exciting developments that we've just been learning about over the last couple of months is, is a tool, a software tool that will be made available to Montpelier for free, um, that the residents, either a Realtor or a resident, the person who's selling their house can use to plug in information about their home and, and create this energy label. So that it wouldn't, they wouldn't have to have a walkthrough necessarily, or, um, they could, they could do it at no cost, basically. So that, that was really exciting, and we're, we're kind of learning more about that and trying to do some beta testing of that, um, that software so that we make sure that it actually works before we try and roll it out. But, yeah, I think the overall, the Realtors, there, you know, some who are really excited about this idea, others that are concerned and skeptical.
That's fair. Accurate.
I have just a couple other points if...
Um, I also, I think there might be some community members who have questions, or, um, should we do that at the end after?
Um, let's, well, you only have a couple more bullet points.
Yeah, let me just go through my bullet points, and then we could take questions from the council, or if they're public folks. So just switching to the next topic, which was our residential work, so, um, I've been really excited about a pilot program that we're doing with Efficiency Vermont this year. Um, for the whole year of twenty nineteen, we actually have some, uh, staffing from Efficiency Vermont to provide, um, kind of what I call concierge service, but basically like project support for multi, owners of multifamily buildings, um, to help them access the incentives of Efficiency Vermont, uh, low interest financing, um, and kind of project management support, just like helping them identify projects, um, that can improve the efficiency of those multifamily buildings and, um, and move them along. And so we're kind of halfway through the year, um, I don't have the stats all right in front of me, but they've been, they've done a couple dozen walkthroughs, um, have a number of projects lined up, both with Capstone, um, and with Re-E Thermal, which does the larger multifamily buildings, weatherization. So we'll, we'll continue to report back on that, but I think it's a, it's an exciting model that hopefully Efficiency Vermont can replicate in other places after we show how well it works.
Can I jump in on that?
Yeah.
I just want to highlight that the number of total projects actually being done in Montpelier, uh, is double, um, what it was, uh, like the average of the last couple of years, in terms of total projects done in multifamily buildings, which is very exciting, so.
And we still, yeah, we're still kind of early on, and, and, and they've been, uh, Phoebe, who is the, the woman who's working on it from Efficiency Vermont, has been reaching out to some of the larger property owners, or, you know, owners of larger properties, um, which we know, like, if we can work with some of those folks who own hundreds of units within the city, um, we can really have, hopefully, a bigger impact, so. Um, and then another new project that we are excited about that is, um, kind of more focused on, on individual homeowners, but also for renters, is called Window Dressers, and, uh, this is a project that, um, it's actually a nonprofit organization based in Maine. And what they do is they, they run community workshops to help people build low-cost interior storm windows. So they have someone, volunteers come out to your house, they measure the size of your windows, and then a couple months later, they, um, will come, it will set up for a whole week, and those folks who are interested will come and help build their actual window inserts and take them home at the end of the day. And at a low cost, so, you know, average thirty to forty dollars per window. So we're really excited about bringing this to Vermont, we're one of a handful of communities in Vermont that will be part of this this year. Um, and we have secured using the hub, which is, um, this multi-use space at the Berlin Mall. So we've booked that for a, a week in January, and, um, starting in September, we'll be starting to do outreach about how folks can sign up to be part of this project. So stay tuned for more on that. And as you may have heard, the, the legislature has approved new weatherization funding, uh, through the state, and so we're, um, you know, the, the details of that have recently been announced, and we're, we're hoping to do some more outreach around that to help, um, both low-income and middle-income folks access those new incentives. And then the last section is transportation, um, Sustainable Montpelier Coalition has really been taking the lead on the rollout of this idea of, um, on-demand micro-transit, um, and what I've, I, I have not been involved in, in much of those meetings, but, um, my understanding is they have now, um, decided to use this service called VIA as the, the software platform, but also have GMT operate the system, and, um, pending some federal funding, they're hoping to start a pilot next summer. So it would, um, be next fiscal year, but, um, yeah, stay tuned for more on that. And there were also been, you know, continue to work on, on bike and pedestrian issues, and one of those was a, a mass bike ride that happened back in July. So that's my update, and I'm happy to take questions.
Um, I, well, I've received multiple comments from a few different people now, this sound still isn't working on the streaming. Oh? Oh. Okay. Um, I'm not sure, it's one of the city employees, so I'm, I'm not sure where he's watching.
Uh, let's see, shall we go to, if there's other, other questions, we'll come back?
Just says online.
Oh, wait, other comments or questions for Kate? Uh, Jack?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say I'm always impressed by the quality of, uh, your presentations and the quality and professionalism and breadth of the work that the energy community does. Thank you.
Yeah. It's a great group. Cool. All right, well, um, any other questions, Ashley, for about this?
I thought I saw a couple hands in the...
If, if there's questions from the public about this, yeah. Thank you.
I don't have a question.
Oh, do you want to introduce yourself first?
Um, Vicki Lane in Montpelier. I, um, I just want to make sure that while we're doing this real estate thing, that people like me, who have worked very hard, and I only ha, I have less than five more years on my mortgage, and then it's all mine, um, sort of, um, don't get penalized because we don't have the money to install the latest efficiency stuff, um, in our houses, and our houses are old. And you're talking about those window insert things, being thirty or forty dollars in a window. I believe I have somewhere near thirty windows in my house. That's a lot of money for me. It's still cheaper to me, and I have storm windows, it's still cheaper for me to put plastic on the inside of the windows, and works better. So I just want to make sure, while you're writing this ordinance related to residential real estate, that you do not penalize those of us that are lower income and do not have the money to update to the, to the, to the hilt. Because it sounds to me as though that's where this going, this is going, that there's going to be a mandatory energy thing, and those houses with all this wonderful energy stuff are going to go at higher prices. And we're not going to see any reduction in our taxes for that. But our houses will go at lower prices than anyone else's, and that's not fair.
Thank you, Vicki. Uh, we'll be talking more even particularly about that topic at the hearing on the twentieth, so, well... Yeah, please do, it's great.
But I want to make sure the whole council hears that.
Other comments or questions?
Ben Hufman, Cliff Street, and, uh, basically, while I think this is a well-intended proposition, it is misguided from a practical point of view. And, um, I don't know if this is the time to express my reservations and critique of it, but if so, I'm happy to do that.
Uh, you can if you would like, um, otherwise, there's going to be a hearing on the twentieth.
Yes, no, I understand that, but I think the point here is that eventually the council's going to have to approve of it. Uh, you said you did not go to the last meeting, and I'm, I'm, uh, would like to be sure that the council hears the diversity of points of view. So I think with that, I'd like to just go ahead and be as brief as I can. I've got two or three basic reservations. The, uh, practical one primarily is that the proposition is to create both a new function, that is to be part of the real estate transaction that we're all familiar with, I think, those of us who have bought and sold real estate. But more significantly, in some regards, is it's also creating a new profession. And I guess I would just remind people who, uh, may not be familiar with buying and selling real estate, that we have a half a dozen professions that are involved in, in every one of those, or at least who can be. We have real estate people, we have lawyers, we have appraisers, we have building inspectors, we have, um, surveyors, and we have financiers. Every one of those professions is licensed by the state and/or the federal government, which has a well-established body of law and practice for a long time. And from as far as I'm concerned, I don't see the point in trying to reinvent the wheel in how to create a new profession when, when it, when it already exists, and I'm not sure that the city is capable of doing what the state regulation and process entails, of assuring that people who have been trained, but are they competent, that there is supervision of their practice, and there's adjudication when problems arise that, uh, can get resolved. So I, I just think it's a foolhardy thing that you're doing, and if it's something that needs to be done, it ought to be... needs to be done, it ought to be done through the state legislature and adding to that process. And furthermore, I guess this is another point I would make. I say I've got one minute more, and this is really quite frustrating, because, and I just want to say this, during the debate about this in the fall, the point was made by members of this council and other proponents of the proposition, that people had to vote for the request to the legislature to have a charter change before citizens could talk about the proposition in substance. And already, I witness that that's not happened. The next meeting that you're going to have on the twentieth is not about that, it's about how to do it. And so, I feel like the council has really not behaved properly in a governance sense on this one, and those are my reasons.
Thank you, Ben. I have actually one question for you. What profession are you imagining that this is creating?
Well, it's creating the profession of energy assessment. And I'm sorry, but there is one other point I want to make, which is part and parcel of the whole thing. Every one of those professions is a competitive proposition, and, you know, if you believe at all in competition in the marketplace, it's one way the argument is made, and I believe it, to assure that you get adequate service. And the way this has been described thus far, is it's all going to be through one organization, Efficiency Vermont. And I think that is, you know, a second mistake of creating essentially a monopoly on something which is going to be required by law, and, you know, what's to have, what's to create the safeguard that things that you don't want to have happen, happen there, which the existing system that I've alluded to through the licensing regulation of professionals is already set up to do.
Thank you.
Can I just make a clarification?
Please, yes.
So, the model that we are exploring right now, and I do want to say that it is, nothing is set in stone, we're, it's, this is an ongoing process, you know, that we're looking to take a year or two with, so we're not trying to rush anything through, but that it is not creating a new profession, and that it would be disclosure of the owner, the seller.
That's a problem.
So, but I just want to, just like you do lead paint disclosure when you're selling your home, this would be similar to that in that the seller could fill out this form, basically, with information about their home and make that available at no cost, so it would be, it wouldn't require hiring a separate professional.
I also want to clarify that, just reiterate, that the meeting on the twentieth is about just exploring what has been done elsewhere in the country and hearing people's concerns, and also what's been done in Vermont as well. Steve Whitaker.
Steve Whitaker. I want to second the concerns raised by Mr. Huffman, while he and I might not agree on anything else, irritating decades back. This is something, I was trained as an energy auditor of schools and hospitals by the Lawrence Berkeley Lab many, many decades ago, and it is a profession, and we might need to approach this in a way that could be rolled out statewide, that if we're going to reach our energy goals, our net zero goals in Montpelier or statewide, or have a meaningful dent in climate disruption, we will need a profession of precision energy auditors who can accurately disclose the energy demand of a building before it's sold and/or find economical ways to do it. So, I don't think tippy-toeing around or evading that point, but I think a competitive model of trained professionals, this could be a curriculum that started now in Vermont Technical College or whatever, and I would encourage you to look at it and approach it from that angle, that we would need a competitive market, we would need trained, the skillset for residential buildings that will be different than the skillset for commercial buildings. My skills are rusty on that topic by now, but I won't pretend to know state-of-the-art, but I do think it's an opportunity for us to create economic development and job training, which are relevant to today's needs.
Thank you. Donna?
Well, I just, I want to thank Ben for coming and making comments, and Stephen, that I really see us in a wide spectrum, taking comments, all the meetings that happen, all the comments here, to then look at that, and then again, if indeed we come up with a written policy, that'll be talked about again. So, lots of time, we're not trying to do anything too quick.
Any other, besides, anybody who hasn't spoken on this topic yet? There is someone else, Vicki, I'm sorry, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Rubin. I run a nonprofit for sustainable heating, and I just thought I would quickly add to your knowledge base here about the Appraisal Institute, which is the national association that qualifies and educates appraisers. And they do have a fairly new addendum called the Green Addendum, and I'm not sure if this is already on your radar, but if it's not, it should be, it is not free, in fact, it costs more than a regular appraisal, but it is also an option rather than a requirement. So, just wanted to add that to the discussion.
Thank you. Donna?
Is that posted anywhere, we like the guidelines, that's under a green appraisal? Something you could send us?
Green addendum.
Maybe you already have it.
I don't, I just don't know what's coming.
If you want to give me a card with any of the addresses, I can send it to you.
Sure, green paper, thank you.
Any other, anyone who hasn't spoken on this topic yet? Okay, do you have something further to add, Vicki?
Yeah. I still haven't heard anyone express concern for people, and I'm sure there are many in my situation. We're living on shrinking fixed incomes, we own property that someday might need to be sold, and I didn't hear that this was an optional thing. I've, what I've been reading sounded as though this was going to be a requirement when you sold your house, to have this thing done, and I do agree with him. It needs to be a licensed person, not just Joe Blow off the street, or Efficiency Vermont with their own agenda. It needs to be a licensed person, the same as I had to do for being a licensed CPA or a licensed tax person. So, I still have not heard any concern for how this is going to affect those of us that can't afford all this stuff, unless you're planning on having some grants, not loans, not low-interest loans, but grants for people to put things and do things in their homes. Otherwise, it's not fair.
Thank you, Vicki. And just so you and everyone is aware, there is no evidence in places around the country where this has been tried, there's no evidence that it lowers the value of anyone's home, even if it's, even if it's not, you know, terribly efficient. Thank you. All right. Any other comments? Okay, thank you so much. All right, so we have an item relating to the zoning near Saban's pasture, the VCFA parcel. Welcome. Yes, Ben?
And I'm just going to say, I am going to recuse myself from this item. My partner Kate Stevenson is working this, working on this, not in her volunteer capacity, but her professional capacity, so I'm going to leave this item to the rest of you folks. I will be back when it's over.
Back! Okay, so, we are here today to talk about proposal that we have to change the zoning line on the current VCFA parcel. So, we want to tell you a little bit about this project that is in early conceptual design, and then explain the change that we're requesting. That would be part of the proposed zoning fixes potentially, that would be under council consideration in September. So, I'll let you kick off.
Hi, I'm Casey Ellison. I'm here to tell you a little bit about the project, and then Kate's going to get a little more specific about what we're asking for. Basically, we're in contract right now with VCFA on the eighteen-acre parcel of land that's adjacent to Saban's pasture. We are interested in creating two different projects, Phase One and Phase Two, we're calling it right now. Phase One includes what we're calling a bathhouse, and this is a, what we're calling, we're calling it a bathhouse specifically because you could maybe be more familiar with the word spa, but this is more of a community project, which includes things that might, you might see at a spa, saunas, steam rooms, pools, other such facilities for people to use for health reasons and, you know, happiness and keeping warm in the winter. But it's designed more around accessibility for the community, and so that's why we're calling it a bathhouse. A lot of people don't, aren't familiar with that word, so we like to just give a little blurb on what that is to us. So, Phase One is that bathhouse, and Phase Two is going to be, or proposed to be, some small-scale, beautiful sort of housing, a small housing development, which we've identified as probably maximum forty units with some commercial space and some retail space located right down on Berry Street, at the bottom of that parcel.
So, the reason that we're coming to you today is we've started the conceptual site planning process, really spending time on the site and looking at how to locate these various buildings. And in that process of really doing our due diligence on the permitting requirements, this project will go through Act 250, so we're looking at all the pieces of that. But then specifically relating to the city of Montpelier zoning, this parcel is fairly unique in that it encompasses three different zoning types. So, the top part, which is closest to VCFA and, you know, the college green, is mixed-use residential currently. The middle section is residential twenty-four thousand, which is a very low-density residential zone. And then the area closest to Berry Street is the Riverfront District, which is high-density and allows all kinds of commercial uses. And as we started to look at this, we, you know, had a lot of, we've been meeting with the planning department staff, had some questions about exactly where does this line between Riverfront and residential twenty-four thousand fall, because the spot that we're interested in placing the bathhouse is kind of right on that edge. And the difference between the line maps that you download from the city and what we were told, four hundred and fifty feet back from Berry Street, there's, there's a little bit of gray area about exactly where the line is. So, we want to be super clear about that going forward as we go into the site planning process. And looking at how this, these zoning areas were developed in the 2018 zoning rewrite, what we'd like to propose is that the line, the divider line, match the adjacent Zorzi parcel, which is the Saban's pasture parcel. So, our proposal is to move the dividing line back. So, we've got this map. Here.
Michael could give us all a copy.
Right, I don't know, just try and, for everybody in the audience here. So, this is Berry Street, right, and here's the parcel, goes all the way up here to Saban's, to VCFA, right, here's the college green. So, this is, the orange is, is the Riverfront District, the white is residential twenty-four thousand, and mixed-use residential is the yellow, we're not proposing to any change there, but basically, there's a shaded area of about point nine acres that would, that we're proposing be added to the Riverfront District. And you can see, this is approximately the site of the bathhouse that we're looking at. So, it's kind of right on the existing dividing line between the two sections. So, if we were able to change this line and line it up with the Zorzi side, that would give us a little more area to design the, kind of the approach, the driveway and road that will go up to the bathhouse. And do you want to talk a little bit about kind of why that spot?
Can you point out where the residential is, the units, the housing units?
The housing units.
And when you say housing units, do you mean like single-family or?
Multiple.
Nope, it'll be, it's going to be a project that is...
Do you want to take the mic out of the stand?
Yeah. So... Again, it's all very conceptual, but we've been hearing a lot that Montpelier needs more housing that's, you know, friendly and approachable and beautiful, and we're interested in community projects, so this would be a place that would, and again, we don't have any details on the design yet, but small-scale with a lot of thought around how it feels to be there for people, the...
Is there going to be housing that's accessible?
It's going to be housing that's approachable for all different kinds of people, so we definitely have room for all kinds of discussions around that, yes, absolutely, and yes, accessible. So, yeah, small-scale, beautiful, and eco-friendly housing down right near Berry Street, so we are interested in maintaining the integrity of this piece of land as well, so we are interested in keeping the housing down here. And that's actually one of the reasons that we want to request this zoning change through looking at the land in order for us to keep enough space for the housing and the bathhouse. If the bathhouse is allowed to be tucked in just a little further here, it gives us a little more room to kind of do the housing down closer to Berry versus having to move it up the hill. So, that's another reason. So, this, this area here, it's, it's a bit of a complicated site, and so, any, every, you know, bit of space here matters, the topography of this, the site is a little bit friendlier, just a little higher up. Down here, we're concerned that we might have to do more blasting or more earth-moving if we were, if we needed to build lower down. So, one of our interests is keeping this low impact. Also, if we are able to move it up here, it gives us less of a likelihood of having to be, you know, visible and affecting the Saban Street folks, which we're, we're concerned about their sightline and their, you know, happiness as well. So, you know, just examining this site very specifically, we feel that this makes a really big difference, being able to move it up a little bit. Also, considering that it's a community project, this, this project is not driven by profit, this is driven by the desire to create community space for the people in our community that we love and care about. We would like to save costs if we can, you know, but if we have to build in a different spot, we're looking at a lot more, a lot higher engineering costs, basically, is what it comes down to, so.
Can I help turn her around?
Sure, yeah.
Because council missed all of that.
Sure. So, anything that I should clarify with, with that?
Why don't you just do over what you said again? So, we know what you're saying here.
Sure. Well, you guys have the same map, but if you're just looking at it, yeah, put the orange on the bottom, and, yeah, so basically, just in, like Kate said, our first, you know, thought was just consistency, kind of keeping the zoning line consistent with Zorzi. We had heard that it was a bit arbitrary, so when we looked at the site without knowing where the zoning line was in actuality, we just placed the building in a way that felt like it would be the most natural to the land, the least obtrusive, the least destructive, and then when we went and did the actual GPS points, we realized that we were kind of straddling the line, so we decided that we should try to ask for a modification there. And we would like to keep the housing down near Berry Street, because it's kind of a little bit more of a lively, like, we want it to be approachable, we want it to be, like, you're coming to it from the street, whereas the bathhouse, we would like to be tucked in a little bit more, so, which would kind of maintain the character of this land here. We'd like to keep this all pretty much like how it is.
Why tucked in?
Tucked in just for privacy, for the... Tucked in just for privacy for the people that live here. Basically, if you're getting out into this field, you're, you know, we're not interested in really developing this field. So if it's kind of tucked into these trees here, it's just a little less obtrusive. And also, for the character of the building and being inside the building, it's supposed to be kind of like a natural space where you're kind of encountering the trees around you and, you know, in a kind of a calmer atmosphere. So keeping that kind of tucked in here and this all down here sort of interacting with what's going on on Berry Street is our intention. So if we have to move this guy, the bathhouse, down, it really affects what we're able to fit and how we're able to fit it down here. Because we're not really interested in cramming anything in, we really wanna make it nice. So that's, that's most of it. And we've, you know, the questions that we've heard or the concerns that we've heard are more, you know, around, of course, we, like, we have the, the Saban Street folks in mind. We've spoken with, with some of them already, with, we've met with the group, the Saban Street neighbors. And there was concerns about, well, if we change the zoning, doesn't that mean that there's the ability to put much more housing here? In fact, for us, it's not, that's not really even on the table. You know, we're just concerned with building this one building here. And this is actually zoned for housing, this rez 24, but that's not what we're doing with it. So in the interest of actually keeping the, the character of this land, we believe that this change will actually be really helpful. So, did I miss anything? Okay.
Do you have a timeline for this project?
We'd like to be, again, we're still very conceptual, we're also still in feasibility, so it will be helpful to know the outcome of this kind of thing for us to make sure that we can achieve what we'd like to. But our feasibility period with VCFA ends in the end of September, so we're, you know, the, the purchase will happen in the end of September if everything's, you know, all systems go. And it's a big project, so we'll be designing for quite a while. We, we hope to be just starting to possibly, possibly do some site work next fall, but the construction won't likely begin until spring of 2021.
Do you have any purchase?
The purchase of the land? Me. Yeah.
So the way I'm imagining the structure of this conversation is, is if there's any questions that the council has at this point, and then I'd like to take comments or questions from the public, and then we'll come back to the council for, for the thoughts and what you want to do.
Should I speak this, like this?
Yeah, maybe like a catty corner or something. Yeah, that's great. Super. That works. Any questions that councilors have? Yes.
I remember, this was one of the parcels that we had extensive discussion about.
I did?
Yes. I would like to, well, I mean, I guess, the, the request is that we revisit a decision that a prior council made about this, and so I think it's important that the council take some time to reflect on why those changes were made and the map was shaped the way it was.
Other questions? If not, then that's fine. Comments or questions from the public? Paige, or whoever.
Hi, I'm Paige Gerton. I'm speaking as a private citizen, not a Conservation Commission member. I have a couple of questions, and the first one is, would you consider swapping Phase One and Phase Two and building the housing first? Wondering if that is a possibility, since that's really what the community needs. And I'd like to learn a little bit more about the bathhouse and what its purpose is. I guess I would caution the council to be very careful about making changes at the request of an individual who wants to do something with the property that it wasn't intended to use for in the first place. And that's, you know, it's not, it was, basically, that whole parcel seems to have been zoned, or the intent of the zoning was for housing. And while I would love to see part of the parcel kept open, I think housing is what we need and is the best use of the whole parcel, so that's all.
Thank you.
Hi, Joe Castellano, Saban Street. I'm one of the abutters. I have handouts. Okay. Casey has been very kind and has already met with a number of the neighbors, gotten some of our input. Based on the meeting that we had at the Planning Commission the other night, I used our GIS, GIS mappings program to kind of at least delineate how many acres of the parcel. It's an 18-acre parcel, and the riverfront is a little less than five acres, plus or minus. I mean, I was kind of just roughly scaling it based on the handout that Kate provided us at the meeting. And it looks like what is being considered for the zoning alignment, I know Kate said it was .9, I came up with 1.17, it's, doesn't matter to me, but that's roughly about like 5% of the parcel. Then the rez 24,000 is five acres, and then the mixed-use is 7.24 acres. If you look at what I've delineated to the right of the 1.17 acres, that's the proposed zoning change area, so that's essentially what we're talking about. Now, my house actually abuts the riverfront, but it's my neighbors who's probably gonna be impacted more, Dan Clark and Aaron Brondike, by the rezoning. I guess some of the concerns of the neighbors are that, you know, their parcels would be, if the development were, or the zoning alignment were not to change, then they would be less severely impacted than if it were to change to riverfront, because riverfront allows for a much greater density, much greater differentiation in use. The other thing that has a concern of ours is the 40, I also calculated what the slopes were, and basically about where they're proposing to site the bathhouse is between, there's a 40% slope followed by a 30% slope, and that's gonna be very costly to engineer and also costly to develop. And that was also provided some, I had some input from Michael Hoffman, who's an active 50 permit specialist, when talking about this. Our concern is just the increased density, if it is, if the zoning alignment is allowed. And I know that a number of us are concerned about the financial feasibility of the spa proposal, and a number of us are concerned that if this doesn't move forward or financially doesn't work out, that it gets sold to another developer and then it, we end up with a development that adversely impacts the neighborhood. So that's just my concern. That's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Jeff Rubin, and I am the adjacent property owner to the west on Berry Street. And first of all, thank you Councilperson Hill for saying that there is some history here. As I understand it, the, the zoning line as it's drawn now was not arbitrary, that the way it was originally contemplated was that commendably, the idea was to move housing down near Berry Street and to leave more open space up the hill. The original line was 300 feet from the center line of Berry Street, and then the person at VCFA made their arguments at the time of the zoning and had that line moved from 300 feet to 450 feet. And of course, that adds to an increase in total density. The contemplated change in the zoning line would add another, I think, 34 units to the available units to be placed in, on the riverfront section. So that creeping increase in density is, is of some concern, and it, it is a complicated site. I think prior to the change in the slope ordinance, it's just a couple of months ago, it wouldn't have been permitted on a 40% slope anyway. So there's a lot of land there, it seems to me, there's a lot of ways to skin the cat and to put a, a building of that size on a site of that size. It's a little difficult because there's no actual proposal in front of us at this time. So if the, if the zoning line change were to be adopted, I would request that the council consider some language that at least keeps the density at the current level. And so that's my, that's my comment. I also have a question, because I've heard a lot that the community needs additional housing, and I've also heard some counter-arguments that we're actually losing population. And I'm wondering if the council can guide me to any studies or documents where, that provide data on the need for additional housing in the community.
I think the vacancy rate, at, at least in terms of rental, the, the need for rental units, I mean, the vacancy rate is less than 1%. I think, and I think I'm the only renter on the council rate now, and trying to find an apartment here every time I've had to try has been, I mean, like, a, a month's-long endeavor, you know, just trying to like make it all work. I, I think too, the other piece is, I would, I would actually drill your question down a little further, which is a question about market-rate housing versus, you know, mixed-income housing developments, where there might be community development block grants, CDBG money available versus like, you know, either housing with landlords or developers that would accept Section 8, which we have a significant demand for in Montpelier. I mean, the lists alone, I mean, if, if you're on a list to wait for a voucher, you're waiting, I think, the last time I checked, it was six to eight months to actually get into permanent...
Three years.
So, yeah, I mean, so the fact that you've got people in transitional housing for two years in this area, I mean, says pretty clearly, there's a huge demand, at least for rental housing, you know? I'm certainly never gonna be in the single-family home market, because I bought an education, which was foolish, but, you know, I have a mortgage on my brain that I'll never live long enough to pay off, and they can't even foreclose on it. You know, and, and so I, I would actually drill down further. Is it really a need for single-family homes, or is it a need for different approaches to housing? So.
That's the first time I've heard that, so thank you.
It's, it's pretty hard, trying to find places to live in this town.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is the first I'm getting acquainted with this proposal, so I am not as well-prepared. But I'd point out that moving a zoning line is not an approval of a project. This would have, still have full Act 250 vetting review, et cetera, so I don't see the harm in allowing for the possibility of exploring and designing something which would be very thoroughly scrutinized. I question whether that's the best location for a bathhouse, for accessibility by the whole town, but time will tell. And I would encourage you to at least not foreclose the opportunity to explore this in full detail.
Thank you.
You mean I have to yell? I have to echo what Ashley said. What we need in, in Montpelier is not more housing, we need more affordable housing, and I'm talking about really affordable housing. If I had not been fortunate enough 25 years ago to be able to get my house at the price I got it, there is not a chance in the world I could live in Montpelier, because the rents for, the rents are practically higher than what I receive every month to live on. And so I, I think, you know, we need to get right down to it and say, we need affordable housing. I cannot imagine paying the rents. I don't know how a student or someone coming out of college, I mean, I was fortunate enough to get my degrees before it got so expensive to get degrees, but it just, I, I mean, we're making it impossible for someone to get a rental and maybe also save to maybe get that first home that they might dream about getting. So I think we need to remember that it's not just housing we need, we need affordable housing. And I'd like to trade a bathhouse, a bathhouse. People my age don't think positively when we hear that, unless there's a swimming pool involved, for housing, affordable housing.
Thank you. Yeah, you're good.
I apologize, this is gonna be the last thing, 'cause then I need to leave. Again, my name is Lawrence Siller, and I have to incline to agree with, I don't know the lady's name back there, but we need more affordable housing, especially for people with disabilities, people with special needs. I would kind of, if I was able to, I would decline the bathhouse, because I just looked up definitions of, of bathhouse, and historically, bathhouses have not been good. So if there is a bathhouse, sanitation, you know, it needs to be sanitarily good and, as well as policed, because years ago in bathhouses, there used to be like prostitution, and this is something you don't want in the city of Montpelier. So being a private citizen as well as an advocate for people with special needs, I would have to decline the bathhouse, but more affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Comments from council? Jack?
I think that the most pressing need for the city of Montpelier is more housing, more affordable housing, more housing at all levels. I think it is vital to be able to enable people to develop housing, particularly on, on Saban's pasture, because that's one of the few large undeveloped parcels in the city. I think that the increase in density is, is not a bad thing, but a good thing. And density enables us to not only provide more housing for the people who need housing, who would live here if they could find housing they could afford, or if they could find housing, period. Density also enables us to move towards our energy efficiency goals. Density is more efficient than acre lots with single-family housing on. I would certainly, I assume, I'd certainly like to see, take this up in more detail, as I know we will, I'm inclined to be very supportive of this, though. I'm sure the developer is not, is not planning to establish a facility where prostitution and anonymous sexual encounters will be practiced. But I think this could, could be a beneficial addition to the community, but it's not my project, I'm not, I'm not building it, and I'm not putting my money into it, so I'm not in a position to tell her what to do with it. I, I don't think that a change in, in zoning of approximately 5% of this parcel and approximately 1% of the entirety of Saban's pasture is, is something that would have a major impact on, on the character of the parcel or on the character of the neighborhood. And I think that we are long past the time where people should, people anywhere should expect that they can prevent housing development from Saban's pasture now and forever into the future.
Other comments? Donna?
Well, I also like diversified housing, and I think you'd better pick another name than bathhouse. I think it has old-time connotations. All right. Somebody who still does water therapy on her knee, I was interested in hot tub. But I think it sounds exciting and a new possibility. And I was here in the council and went through all the zoning and it may have not been arbitrary, but I don't remember solid reasons exactly why that line was where it was at. And I also feel like we have to be willing to have more density if we want more density down by Berry Street, you know, and the whole bicycle path, the whole connection and that whole community is very dense for people to come and use services, what you put there. Because we did talk about having also local shops, so people could shop in their neighborhood because you're part of the Savins Pasture neighborhood, but not Savins Pasture block.
Right.
And so we're hoping to have more housing over there. So I like seeing these kinds of ideas and I would support this.
Connor?
Yeah, no, I agree with Ashley. I think you're busy growing or you're busy dying here and we're kind of at a crisis mode where we're going to have to look at like rent stabilization or something if it keeps going this way. So adding some density makes sense to me. We've already banned prostitution in our ordinances, so I'm not too worried about that either. So I'd be comfortable with this, there's still a lot of hoops to go through for you.
Ashley, did you want to weigh in?
I, I'm still, I am looking at zoning maps and my old notes, so I'm gonna pass.
I'd also like to point out that the proposal before the council tonight, you're not finally approving this, this is really to give a signal, the planning commission is preparing the final draft for your public hearings. And so this really just be saying you could include that in that draft, you could still then take it out if you chose to during, you have to go through the two public hearings to adopt with all the other zoning changes. So there's at least two more bites of the apple on this issue for the public and for yourselves in terms of the process ahead of you.
So we need a motion then to encourage?
To include?
It in the draft that comes back to us.
Yes, in the zoning fixes, that is going to be warned for September, I forget what the date is.
11th.
Do we need to wait until then to get back?
I don't think, Glenn's not.
Oh, he's not, that's right. Sorry, I forgot why you left. Well, I'll make a motion that we include this request to draw, to redraw the zoning line for the density in the drafts that we're going to be getting from the planning department for considerations in the future.
Second?
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And so I'm going to vote aye to make a fourth and so the motion passes. So this will be a part of that package on, in the September zoning changes. Thank you.
Before we move to the next item, I'm hearing people still saying they can't, don't have video on the screen.
It's through the city website that it's not working.
Okay. All right, it is 8 o'clock. Do you want to take a break now? Do you want to keep moving forward? What do you want to do? Short break? Five minutes? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break and then we will dive into this topic.
All right, so we are up to an item related to the creation of a task force to address homelessness in Montpelier. Basically a continuation of a conversation that.
It's a brief zoning update.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Sorry about that.
Can't skip out on the quick zoning.
Yeah, no.
I gotta go home, so.
Those merged together in my mind, I apologize. Right, zoning update, please, go ahead.
So this should be really quick because we met on June 26th to discuss the draft fixes and I was asked to review some section, including 3103 on community facilities. I did, I reviewed that with our city attorneys. The next section after it is accessory dwelling units and they also reviewed that one and made some recommendations. I don't know if you guys really care how we get into the, what they recommended, but the recommendation was, we'll follow state law and reference the state law and here are the ones. So we're not going to restate state law, we're just going to say, these community facilities that are identified under state law, by state law, we only have a limited number of things we can review and we will respect the limitations as established under state law. But we're not going to restate the rule because the rule could change over time. So that was a recommendation of our city attorney and I think that was a recommendation of maybe Lauren or somebody else that made that. So we did follow through with that. The brief changes were made to accessory dwelling units, just to clarify because we had some unique rules that we had made about if you've got a single-family home, you can have a duplex. Well, they started to kind of collide with the accessory dwelling unit rules and so our attorneys made a few minor changes to clarify, to make sure that was good. There was a change, there was a court decision on the Oxford comma. So they now honor the Oxford comma, so if you don't have it in, they will read it as if it's, that's what you intended. And so we went through and did a technical review for Oxford commas and added those in. So just if you see changes in there that weren't there before, that's, that's where, we did an Oxford comma. And the last one was, we had found some places where land development, we had done some search for places in developing this draft where we had always said land development and we said, we're just saying things we don't need to, we can just say development. And for some reason, we didn't complete that search because we found a whole chunk of them that were still in there. So those are the four sets of changes that are currently in the draft. You just approved a fifth change with the zoning change for VCFA. So I just wanted to give you guys a quick update and let you know, I will incorporate, I will take all these, they're actually already on the website under the zoning fixes tab. We'll put the map on tomorrow, so that will be on and I will prepare this to get warned, including we, because of the zoning change, we will have to amend the required report under state law, which is just a legal thing. And I will work with Kirby, the planning commission chair, to get that done. And so we will be ready for the public hearings on the 11th, September 11th and September 25th, so.
Any questions for Mike? Okay.
We need a motion.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes to the draft so that staff can then warn public hearings for September 11th and 25th.
Second?
Further discussion? Any comments from the public? Okay. Are you none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Apparently I've been one item ahead of myself this entire meeting, I apologize. So now we are on to the homelessness task force. And so I'm going to turn it over to Bill, I suppose, to sort of explain where we're at.
At our last meeting, we had a long discussion about the needs of homeless people, the needs of the downtown and related issues and how, how the city could best weigh in. And at the end of it, the council opted to form a task force to look at some of the ways and asked staff to sort of put together the outline of what that might, what a task force might take up and what it might look so. So in doing so, we, our staff group met and kind of, and thought through some of the issues and sort of the why, what, how, et cetera, what would be the purpose of it, these sort of things, and then who might be included. And so we had a little bit of an outline and then we invited some of the providers just to get a sense of what they felt were gaps and what they felt might be needs and could be helped. We weren't intending to include them as members of the task force, but simply to get their input as we thought about that. So it all ended up in a relatively short outline that you have. We recommended a certain makeup of the task force that was not based on any science. We were trying to make sure it was manageable size and people that we thought. We've since received several suggestions from community, other community members about the makeup, some of whom are here. And I think those are all very well-thought-of suggestions as well, so it's really, I'd leave that to the council of how you want this task force composed, who would be on it. And the one thing I think that we did conclude in terms of, of this issue as moving forward is that to be effective, that we have to look at what's before us here in our community and it's very easy to, to think about all the root causes of homelessness and to go down those paths, but I think we have to stay away from that. You know, not that, not that those aren't important, but this group can't focus on alcoholism or substance abuse or domestic violence or, you know, housing costs and those kind of things. It's really got to be about the people who are in this situation and what they need and how they connect to services and how they can best be served and, and how we can meet their needs, whether it's to transition them into housing or just provide them shelter or get, you know, better ways to get them services and even it might be things as, you know, are there public bathrooms or accessibility to showers or laundry or whatever those needs are. And because it would, you know, the city of Montpelier is not going to solve the root causes of homelessness. This is, you know, a national, international issue and, but this is one thing we can do is to help the people in need in our community. So that was our, kind of our scope, so to speak, and we'll leave it up to you where you want to go with it.
So again, I'd love to take comments or ideas from councilors, hear from the public and then revisit where we go. So Connor?
Yeah, just a quick thought, I agree with you, Bill, it's not the city alone that can fix this issue. I'm wondering if there's any thought to inviting a member of our delegation, Mary Hooper comes to mind, just to have that link with the state legislature and any resources we can draw down from that. Yeah, just a thought there, invite somebody into the fold there.
So, you know, again, we could have, we didn't think of that, so it wasn't thought of and rejected. I think there's, you know, you could have a, you get a really long list of people and that's great. I think there are certain sizes of groups that work well and certain sizes that don't, so I wouldn't want to exclude people, but I also think if you're going to be functional, you've got to have a functional size. Obviously, everyone can participate. So like I said, the size and composition is really up to you. We were, we really were thinking, hey, if you have five people, you can really work together and dig in, but we also recognize it's a lot of people being left out, so.
Other thoughts? Glenn and Don?
First, thanks very much, Bill, for setting this up and thanks all the community members for coming last time and this time to talk it over. I think my basic question is around the schedule, when we might expect this task force first to meet and, and get down to work. It seems to me, related to that, that we're likely to start faster with a smaller group only because we can coordinate fewer schedules together. And Bill, I don't know if you have an idea about how quickly we could, we could convene it?
I think the group can meet as soon as it's identified. So I would say your goal for tonight would be to decide either specific people that you want to put on or a process for putting specific people on or the size, the representation, that kind of thing. And, you know, we can move that, you know, we're now back on an every-two-week schedule, so possibly even appoint people at the next meeting. And then it's just a question of how soon they can be convened and meet. I mean, there's no, there's no reason for any delay. And it's actually one of the reasons why we, we had the meeting with the providers was to not have to wait before we got some base information, so.
Don?
I like the small size, but I think you need more than one homeless person there. And I like the idea of having your resources separated, like Mary Hooper and others that you listed, so they're available, they can be copied when your meetings are, but that you keep your core functioning separately. And we also got some emails suggesting places who are already working with this and how grants that they got, so I hope we're looking into that too.
Yeah, so again, I have no pride of ownership of who's on this, you know, this was our stab at what a group might look like if, if you all want to change the makeup of it entirely. Okay.
Okay. Other comments? No? Jack, go ahead.
I, I really appreciate the work that's been done. My inclination is to think that a bigger group is probably not a huge group, but I think more in the seven or eight people range than the five people range, to make sure we have enough chance for everyone who should participate to be participating, keeping in mind that I know, once we set up the group, any member of the public would be eligible to come and participate.
Great. Any other comments? No, that's fine. And I'm sure Stephen, you are here because you want to say something.
Yep.
Okay.
Am I able to be heard? I applaud the work that went into setting up that meeting and getting that memo out. I want to ask the council vigorously and sincerely want to ask the council to consider a different structure for the, the committee. I've been working on this, as you know, I've been asking you to deal with this since before the Bethany Church warming shelter closed. It has gone from bad to worse and I don't think the recognition of the immediacy of these impacts is well, is, is felt by the general public or even the council members. Some of the homeless folks charged their phones at a pedestal out in front of La Brioche. Recently, a padlock appeared on that electrical outlet. I mean, the, the, someone might not be able to call for help if they need it because their phone is dead, just because of these little simple things. So what I've done is I've been doing my own kind of inventory of folks, both providers and passionate citizen advocates, as well as a count in Berry and Montpelier, Berlin. And I've sent a memo to Bill recommending some folks that are willing. Has that been circulated?
Yes.
Okay. I want to point out that I met Rhonda Gable because she was taking care of, in her off time, private time, was taking care of Alex, the big Negro gentleman who couldn't walk very well, had diabetes, et cetera. And she and I looked out for him for a while. She works for Washington County Mental Health, she's expert, but she would participate in such an action, offered to participate, not in her official role, but as her citizen. She's got a husband and kids and stuff and she still cares so much. This is the kind of people you need to be working on this. Tyler Strange staffed one of the overflow shelters during the last winter and he has been actively engaged in trying to create a workforce project where homeless folks could get a leg up in some job skills doing job site cleanup or demolition, possibly even in concert with the Home Farm Road project. He's open and engaged and willing to serve on this. Morgan Brown, you know I won't speak for, he's not here tonight because he's recovering from his neighbor's recent demise. Will is formerly homeless himself and now he's the regional supervisor for both La Moyle and Washington County for the Office of Economic Opportunity, which funds Good Sam. He offered to participate in this, not in his official role, but in his citizen advocate role. I think that's invaluable. So this team, and Zach can speak for himself, expert, knowledgeable, passionate, dedicated. So the fact that here are, and myself, as you know, I care a lot about this issue. So I have proposed early, when I first recommended this task force, that a, that it be a three-town task force. I now realize that scope would be too dilute. Each of these towns needs its own task force and my hope is that Montpelier moving first and forming such a task force will seed the creation of one in Berry and/or Berlin. But I've put in my little memo to Bill that a possible liaison from Berry and Berlin could participate here. But my recommendation is that we not put councilors, I've tried for months to get a couple of councilors to meet with the former director of another way. It's, it's not the type of effective spontaneity passion and we've got to write a plan that deals with this week and the one-week horizon, the four-week horizon, the six-week, the eight-week, the 12-week. We need to write a two-year plan that's going to We need to write a two-year plan that's going to eventually end up with microhouses, you know, and shelters, and social service liaison, et cetera. So I know it's a lot of information, but I believe that I've done my homework here, and identified a team of six, which you feel free, and it's at your discretion, to add to, but I would ask you not to delay. If you want to advertise for some more, and vet and consider, but I'd ask you to do that as an add-on later, but you get the project started. Winter's coming on, there are immediate needs now, and you've got some really qualified people here, ready to do the work. Thanks.
Uh, yes, come on up.
So hello again. My name is Erica Rial. I work for the Vermont Center for Independent Living. We're a cross-disability organization. When I was looking at the suggested list, I realized that you had all mental health advocates, and nobody for other disabilities on the list. We have people on staff that have autism, developmental disabilities, people that are blind, deaf, and these people are also homeless. And so I'm wondering if you would also consider a member of our staff, myself, or somebody on our staff, on this task force, because not only are there people with mental health and recovery issues that are homeless, there's also people that are wheelchair users, people with developmental disabilities, people that are deaf, that are also homeless and need services as well. We know resources that are out there, we know how to get things in alternative formats, we also know that services, other services that are available. Thanks.
Thank you.
Is, are though, I apologize.
Hi.
Hi.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. Would it be possible for you to send an email to maybe Bill Frazier?
Already did.
He did. She sent us one today.
Oh. I don't know that I, I might, I might not have checked my council.
And I just reforwarded, I know you got it, I just reforwarded Steve's email to, I know, but it's the one from Steve earlier, I just sent it just now again, so it should be top of your list right now.
Sorry.
Oops.
Other comments?
I have a wealth of knowledge in this area, and I, and I recognize that we need to target one section of the issue, yeah, and not be all over the place, because we can't do that, because it's such a big, a big thing. So I'm just going to say that I'm willing to serve in any capacity that the city council would desire. I was in Washington DC when this first came up, so I was unable to be down here. I issued a couple of statements on it. I run outreach efforts out there, basically by talking with people, seeing how they're doing, and just, you know, if they don't want to talk, I move along. So, anyway, thank you, and I will serve in any capacity. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
I would like to just conclude with...
Sorry, well, let's see if there's anybody else who hasn't spoken yet, yeah.
First of all, I think it needs to be said that, and I know that I've heard it said several times, I've heard many, many people come up to me and say, you know, at soup kitchens, or at the bank, or, you know, any number of other things, that people have basically said, "Thank you for actually showing up, and thank you for actually showing an active interest," because I understand that there's a lot of people that are more interested in doing other things, and I care about this town, and I care about the way that things are done here. Perhaps, and I hesitate to say this, but perhaps on a level that other people, you know, they're, they're, they're stuck in their, you know, they're in their lives, they're doing whatever it is they're trying to do. And obviously, there's a little bit more of, if you want to call it civic commitment, if you want to call it whatever, and I'd just like to echo what a number of other people have said on this microphone, I'd be willing to serve in any capacity necessary.
Can you introduce yourself, Casey?
My name is Casey Walsh.
Thank you. Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet on this topic? Okay.
So, in summary, I believe, I've recognized, and this is something that stood out in Bill's memo, that a single site to drop in services, the range of need is so great, and the receptivity to assistance is so great. I've been touched by the folks that basically are surprised that anybody's even thinking about a way to provide services in a way that they can accept. The, the ability for very, folks of varying temperaments, and we need to create a lot of avenues for people to reach out to get the help that can be available. So this is a cross interdisciplinary, cross, it's a very challenging design process, and I believe it's beyond a traditional government approach. There may be recommendations that come out of this task force that don't sit well with traditional ways of thinking about it, but I think you should welcome that. I think that's what it's going to take to really create opportunity and hope in these folks. People are checking out for lack of hope, and we need to do all we can, and it's going to impact and overlap with affordable housing for these folks to step into. So in a nutshell, I've done my best to serve you up a solution.
Thank you.
I do have one question. I didn't understand, in your memo, Bill, the bathroom thing, was that, I don't understand the cost in the ba, is that renting?
Yeah, so one of the, one of the comments that we heard at the last meeting, when people talked about having to clean up pieces and things in a public place, and we, so even just in our group was like, well, where are there public bathrooms? And there are some here in City Hall, but really, the only 24-hour one is in the police station.
Yeah.
And, you know, for whatever reason, not everyone's comfortable going in there. So we thought, well, is that something the city could do, at least seasonally? Is there a place we could put, you know, I mean, porta-potties aren't the greatest thing, but they're better than nothing. And so are there things we could do, or could we then plan to put a real bathroom, you know, could we think about where we could construct a bathroom? But it was just, we were thinking about how, what are the kind of things we could do tomorrow that could help, and then think about a better long-term rate. So it was just, that was a suggestion.
Okay, because I read it like the person would have to pay to...
No, 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 no. That was, we went in, after the meeting, we just said, well, I wonder what it would cost to put something, you know, portable bathrooms in, and that was the cost.
Oh, okay.
To the, presumably to the city.
You could put those fancy things with showers.
Thank you.
That could be the next thing.
Okay. So I see this as having three parts. One part being, how many people, or how many seats do we want to create? Do we want to reserve seats for particular organizations, or say, you know, we'd prefer to have at least, you know, one or two, or however many people have experienced homelessness on the committee? And then the third thing would be, just a quick outline of the mission, or the task that we're asking them to perform. So thoughts about any of those things?
I have...
Oh, Jack, go ahead.
I would suggest, and I, this is what I would make as a motion, just to keep...
Sure, sure, you can.
I know that we created a task force up to eight people, that the city manager be directed to send out the requests for applications from all the groups listed in his memo, and to all the people who've either been listed in Steve Whitaker's memo to us, or who have otherwise already contacted the city to express their interest, including people who are here present, and that we get the application so that the appointments would be made at the next meeting.
I second.
Further discussion? Any thoughts on this? If not, we can just vote. Okay. Going once, going twice? Okay. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you all, for all of your attention, thoughts, you know, going into this topic. So it seems that it is a relatively quick turnaround to have it be on the agenda for the next meeting, so, which is fine, I just want to recognize that. And, yeah, it's actually slightly less than that, so...
Yeah, because we have to have it done for the, but if you've already spoken to your people, and I think these, you know, the organizations, I think, have expressed a willingness, and probably, I bet we could get responses pretty quickly.
Great, and is there any, do we feel like there's pretty, that the task of this group is clear enough, based on this memo, or do you want to discuss that at all?
If you're going to discuss that, I would ask to be heard again on it, or just ask you to re-refine scope at the bottom of my memo.
Uh, Don?
I like the idea of the group starting from here, and then as they meet, they can redefine their mission and task.
Other thoughts on that? Okay. So we'll assume that that, that this memo is sort of the starting place, it does outline some broad scope tasks to look into, and they can go from there. Okay, so, fair enough, we are going to move on at this point, unless there's any further discussion? Okay. So, on to the discussion of Central Vermont Internet and the CVPSA, Central Vermont Public Safety Authority. I think that's, that's you, Steve, if you are ready to come talk through the memo you discussed.
Okay. This is something, again, I've been asking for six months or more, 10, for y'all to take up, that I believe that the, both the CV fiber, which it voted to be called, not Central Vermont Internet, and Central Vermont Public Safety Authority, have a sufficient need for direction and engagement from the city council to achieve results. I spoke at your hearing in November, December, and I shared a transcript of that. The planning that CVPSA arrived at was obviously not sufficiently detailed to create the buy-in from either Berry City or Montpelier City Councils. That has left the organization, CVPSA, in somewhat of a holding pattern, or almost rudderless at this point, lacking direction of what to do in order to, some of that is not the fault of CVPSA, but the result of certain actions needing to be clarified in the legislature, specifically related to the governance of the 911 system, the number of public safety answering points, the dispatch, single-stage versus two-stage dispatching. The overlap, the technology overlap between what CV fiber is aiming to do, which is build fiber to unserved areas, and what CVPSA will need in the way of fiber to transmitters, there are currently gaps. I'm told that the fire trucks lose radio contact as they go up Berlin Hill, and can't receive transmissions. That's downright dangerous. So we need a needs assessment of three technologies. There's the fiber that serves as backhaul to small cell for telephone coverage, the fiber that serves as backhaul to radio transmitters, and the land-mobile radio transmission that is the radios that police and fire and ambulances use today. So the needs assessment is a logical step. I did convene a meeting, Bill convened, allowed me to convene a meeting, including him, a week or two ago, where Paco and a representative from CV, this city's alternate rep for CV fiber, Ken Jones, very capable analyst, and knows a lot about telecommunications now as well. Bill and Kim Chaney joined that meeting, and it became clear in the course of that meeting that the logical next step is a needs assessment, which could serve as a foundation of a, in effect, a telecom plan for Central Vermont, or for the served areas. So I'm proposing that you direct your representatives to the Central Vermont Public Safety Authority, and to the Central Vermont CV fiber, to request that they collaborate on getting, CV fiber is less farther, less along than CVPSA. CVPSA does have some remaining money in the budget that belongs to both Berry and Montpelier. That you direct your delegates, which is Donna and Ashley, to represent to CVPSA the need, or the direction, to get that needs assessment done, but include all those technologies, because they all affect public safety, and they all will similarly accelerate the success of CV fiber and broadband. Is that clear enough?
Questions?
Wow, I did a good job.
Yeah. Ashley? No? Okay. Are you done?
If you don't have questions, but I comment, you can sit, Steve. I have a little different perspective. Can you hear me? Steve, okay. I have to talk sort of this way in, and for them to hear me, it's really strange. But just so the group knows, that Regional Planning Safety Authority was, had put out the idea to do an RFI, Request for Information, to do a huge scope of communication, like Stephen is talking, and there was a communication committee made up for people from the Public Safety Authority and Capital West. They came back, and on the recommendation of that committee, and chief focus, focus, that we not do an RFI, but face the reality that we have radios, and that a radio simulcast system, doing an RFP for that, would go in and assess all the existing fire stations and offices in need, and tell you what you need, and make proposals. And because there's only two vendors that are applicable to our equipment, it's a rather narrow RFP, but they would do that as part of their response to addressing our system, other than to spend money on a separate person. So that's where we're at right now. Capital West has their communication committee looking at this, Tony is part of that.
I, Ashley? I would, so, much to my chagrin, I'll give you that, Mr. Whitaker, I actually agree with you about this, in its entirety. I actually had an opportunity to sit and talk with Stephen about this for quite some while, over a few days, and while his delivery may be rough, he is definitely right about this. In terms of radio communications, you know, as a prosecutor, I'm on call, and when I get Berry Town calls, for example, it has to get routed through someone else to get to me, and then trying to get back in touch with officers who are out in the field who may not have cell coverage, or, you know, their computers might not even work out there, even though they have satellite, I don't purport to understand, but they seem to work in lots of places where there is no other service available, but there are still places where there is no... where there is no service of any sort. And this is by far, I think, some of the most thoughtful partnership proposals that I've seen. And I know that CVPSA went in one direction, I think I was pretty vocal about my disappointment with where that went, but I have been following emails back and forth, and I do, I think this is a very sensical approach to take. I mean, the fact that I can't drive from Montpelier to Burlington and even have cell coverage the entire way is, like, unconscionable to me, because I've driven across the country and, you know, had better service in, like, the middle of nowhere. And so I just, I would encourage the council to really pay attention to this, because there are some changes coming in the legislature, also some changes coming in terms of federal regulation about communication access and things like that. So I would really encourage CVPSA, I know Kim is here, and CV fiber, to really think strongly about how to make this work, because I really do think that this is one of the only ways that we'll ever get the right people in the right room at the right time working on the same thing. So I know it's a deviation and a departure, but I feel pretty strongly that this really is the way to get the information that we need, to then be able to figure out if, you know, okay, fine, so we only really invest in emergency communication infrastructure for now, but at least we know how other pieces would dovetail into that. And it also may be something that can be used as a bigger plan elsewhere, because other areas in the state are talking about this, which may actually attract vendors who may be willing to work in different ways than they currently do. So I just, I think we should be very mindful that this really does bring in all of the stakeholders to this conversation about communication and emergency response, but it will, assuming that everything comes together and works, which I know is a large assumption. But I think there's a lot of opportunity here to get other people to come in who may be able to do part of the work that CVPSA or other individual entities may not, but there's a lot of opportunity for collaboration.
And may I respond to Donna's?
Sure, yeah.
The, and I've tried to avoid getting into any of the dirty laundry of, and I will continue to try to avoid that tonight, but the idea to jump from where we are now to a proposal to purchase a million, one to two million dollar system that only serves part of the need is frankly absurd, that to go to, there was even talk of going with a monopoly vendor, a Motorola simulcast system. Now, it's true that Motorola would design a fiber network to serve their simulcast towers, we would be missing the opportunity to also plan how that might most efficiently overlap and synergize with CV fiber and cellular coverage. So what I'm talking about is having a disinterested, comprehensive foundation for a plan, that once we get that plan, then we're ready to, in fact, the scope of this could include an assessment of Motorola's technology versus alternatives. So let me just caution that we, in my view, CVPSA, Capital West are in no place, form, or status to be bonding one to two million dollars for a simulcast system until these, this planning is done.
Jack, and then Kim.
Since, part of what Donna had to say was that putting, going your route would involve needlessly spending money on this RFI and the planning process, do you, or does anyone have an estimate on what the cost would be of buying this plan?
Well, I just want to make sure, so, my understanding of CVPSA, and Donna, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that's, that was, that was sort of where we had been, was that there was a communications committee who was figuring out who the potential vendors were, but I guess I didn't read that as a disqualifier from, from not staying the court, I can't, my words are gone, but.
I mean, we were going to do the same thing Micro Transit did. Micro Transit went out and did an RFI, and got all these proposals to make the service work, without us spending a dime on a consultant. An RFI in a broad communication was what we were going to do, and we were working on that for about four months, when both chiefs said, "No, we don't want to do that." All of Capital West said, "No, we don't want to do that." So we went back to the simulcast, something they could actually have.
And so, I just, and this is maybe a clarification question then, so, so, I'm going to stop while I'm ahead, because I'm not sure that I'm quite comprehending what you're saying.
Okay, well, can I respond to your?
Were you not comprehending what Jack was saying?
I guess, so, my confusion is, so everyone agreed that that approach wasn't the approach, so it's, so my, what I, the impression I was left with on CVPSA is we're sort of figuring out what is next, is that, and so right now, we're sort of, well, I don't think we do. I mean, the answer, either nothing is next, if we don't have agreement about anything, or it's the RFI from Motorola, because they're the only ones who provide what we would need for the simulcast, or something different.
RFP. Yeah, go ahead, Donna.
The RFI was the broad one that he's talking about. It was including cellular, it was including first, is it called First Alert?
First Net.
Yep, I'm sorry, First Net.
First Net.
First Net. It was looking at anything and everything.
But, and so, but that would be for vendors to send to us, right?
That was just going out there, so vendors would come back with ideas, without any cost to us.
Sure. And so I guess.
The chief blew it down, and so did Capital West.
Well, and, so what I see this as, is an opportunity to figure out exactly what it is that we already have, so that.
I'm going to say, let's pause here a second, unless there's anything further you want to add.
Well, I guess it's just, I don't, I didn't see it as like, and you spend this money, or do this other thing, I mean, the only other thing that I'm aware of as an option is buying the simulcast framework that we would need to upgrade it, but that wouldn't really meet all of the needs, right?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess, I guess that's what I was getting at, is that framing it in terms of, well, this is spending money right now, and the other alternative isn't, I guess, I just, I just want to clarify that it's not about, like, if we spend this, then we can't do that, but rather, this I see as a precursor to getting to a place where we could even contemplate spending additional funds on infrastructure upgrade.
I want to hear from Kim, and then, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I'm Kim Chaney, I'm chair of the CVPSA. This is a very complex subject, and the ask of you tonight is to direct CVPSA to do something, very simply. We have three members, and we have one elephant, and everybody has a different piece of it, and they all are very passionate about their piece of it. When we were here in December, we recommended a study, and I've got the, the item here, and I'll just, I've got three copies, and I'll just pass them around if anybody wants to read it. In December, nothing that I'm aware of has really changed from December. Candidly, I think I learned more about it meeting with Bill Fraser a couple of weeks ago, when he told me that he'd met with the public safety people, and they were all in disagreement about what they wanted and what they wanted to do. And unfortunately, that's not new. It's been going on for the two or three years I've been on the commission. My response to this is to call a meeting for next week, and I hope I'm going to get all the, all our members, which essentially are the people that were going to have to come together with an idea, and see if we can't cut the Gordian knot, at least talk about where they want to go. As I say, everybody has their own solution, and everybody has very different needs, and there's different funding sources, which are very complex. CVPSA, when Paco resigned halfway through his contract, he left some money on the table. And we have approximately fifty thousand in funds, and we can either give it back, whatever it is, fifty-three percent to Berry and forty-seven to Montpelier, or we can do something to further the mission of CVPSA. I'm a strong believer that, and oddly enough, all the public safety chiefs will tell you that they are strong believers in regional communication. When you ask them how they're going to do it, they all say they can't. It's a long battle, and what I would suggest at the moment, now before I give a suggestion, I'm happy to have this come before the council, because as far as I can tell, when we had the meeting in December, almost nobody had read the report that we sent, or had even an inkling of what was in it. I want both city councils to decide what they're going to do with what was a very potent and exciting idea until Berry Town and Berlin dropped out of it. And probably that made it a plan that wasn't going to go forward. I do think, though, that there is room to bring people together if we had a thorough study that would show all the various technological and other solutions that are available, and that we have some competent person that would do that. Paco told me that he was willing to come back to find a person and recommend somebody that he thought was competent to do that. He gave an estimate that the planning cost was within the parameters of the money we have on hand. There is no use in spending money if everybody's going to come and tell me they don't want to do whatever you come up with. So the first steps are to meet with the people, see where they're at, they've kicked it around here now for the last three or four months, I think, with no clear idea where to go. And our, all we can do here is say we're ready to help. And I want to talk to the chief, I know he's been on vacation, and I'm sure quite busy. I did, I did talk to Chief Bombardier. So I have some idea of where this is going, and I'll know a lot better after our meeting. So where I would like to leave it is, I'm delighted it's in front of you. I thank Steve for doing that, because it's at least opened up the door again to think about this. Berry's a whole different subject, and I think when we've had our meeting, I'll be in a position to talk to Berry. I've talked to the mayor, he says, "Well, tell me what Montpelier's going to do, and we'll see what happens after that." So it's, it's pulling teeth. The end story here is that it is absolutely vital for public safety that we agree on what to do and get doing it. There are possibilities of serious harm to our populations with the type of patched-up communication system we have, and I think we all have an obligation, to the people that we're all serving, to plan ahead vigorously and lean on people to reach an agreement so somebody doesn't get badly hurt. Thank you.
I have a question. So, Stephen, is this, what you're proposing here with a needs assessment, is that more or less the same thing as the RFI that was sort of discussed, you know, doing a broad-scale, sort of, look at what's out there?
Well, the current debate, as I understand it, is each separate, each of our members, is an easy way to say it, Berry, Montpelier, and Cap West, have suppliers that they think vendors, that will tell them how to meet their needs. Montpelier getting communications with a fire truck, which they don't have, or if they get in the Pavilion Office Building, they can't talk with anybody, there are probably not terribly complex solutions to take care of those, relay towers or whatever. I think the, and Berry has exactly the same problem, their fire chief can't even call the office, because of the chatter on the, on the web. And there are solutions for Berry to solve that problem.
So, let me just clarify, so I'm wondering, Stephen, if this is?
I haven't seen the draft RFI. I will note that the so-called Communications Committee has not responded with minutes of their prior meetings, nor notice of any meetings since I requested months ago. So apparently that's dormant, too.
Yeah, I haven't seen any.
And so my, my point is that I wouldn't characterize this as an RFI, but Paco's description of it as a needs assessment, and I specifying that the needs assessment be conducted in a manner that could serve as a foundation for a full-on plan, it's not partial or preferential to any of Capital West's preferences or agenda, nor Montpelier's nor Berry's. It's a uniform, and one important piece to add is that if this is done right, and soon, it could serve as the sweetener, the carrot, that could bring, bring to the fore the value of Berlin and Berry Town joining this thing. I think in the long run, Capital West will fade away as a member, and the individual towns will join and begin contributing to this. In effect, what I'm proposing is you take action immediately, it's not doing anything, it's not binding any money that you've got discretion over right now, it's giving direction, which then, I believe Berry City will follow suit and do the same, and Capital West will produce a product which will lay a foundation to CVPSA becoming not a multi-town police or fire agency, nobody's ready to cede their authority, but it would be a communications dispatch, public safety dispatch authority, that could enable, I believe Capital West will sell the two or three towers that they own, and a system will grow to serve all the needs. I think it'll keep it alive, and it will, most importantly, protect the hundreds of thousands of dollars that have been invested by Berry City and Montpelier, and otherwise, I believe, I fear, we'll lose that.
I have one further question, which is, Donna, did they, or Ashley, did the chiefs explain why they didn't want to go with an RFI? Why they wanted to go directly to an RFP?
What they said was it was just too expensive, there was no money, and they, right before that, they had two fires, where the chiefs lost communication with the farm, people in the fire. They had to go inside the building to find out where their crew was. That's how bad a communication system is. And so they were really looking to be more practical.
For fire. No, no, I mean, it's, so there are two separate communication systems for fire and police. Yeah.
Police is far, much further along than fire.
Yeah. Yeah. So, but the fact of it was, that made them think they really needed to get realistic because a simulcast would help them now. And they can build on that to go the next step.
Jack, you have a question?
I, I'm just a little confused on how to proceed, because this council has resided its trust in two very able and perspicacious representatives who are taking different views and both seem to make very good points, and so I, I'm kind of confused about where to go. It sounds like you're saying, Donna, that what the chiefs are asking for now is the only realistic and practicable way to proceed?
Can I talk about this on there? Okay. No, if you want an RFI, then get, get a big scope, fine, but don't spend the last pennies we have on a consultant to then do a need assessment when you can do an RFI and get it done within a proposal. Or the RFP, but that's my thing, I don't want to spend money on a consultant.
Let me just say I disagree with that.
I know you do, so.
And can I, I believe that...
I should do, yeah, go ahead.
And Kim Lyne.
Because the conflict in ideas and technology and understanding of it is pretty widespread. And I think if you get one person, that, people have to buy into it, but if you get one person or firm or whoever that takes a look at the whole thing and makes recommendations, I think it'll pull people together. And frankly, we had some off-the-wall price discussions in December, figuring simulcast would run a million dollars or some number like that. Simulcast isn't gonna solve everybody's problems. But I'm not interested, and I doubt anybody in this room wants to run a large bond issue simply with, with no bid and some manufacturer comes in and says they'll build it. I would think you would want to have the recommendation of a trusted person to say, this is what'll work for everybody, and these are the various costs, and this is who it'll serve. And at that point, we can figure out, do we want to do it or no?
Unless, Steve, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I, I think that an RFI in response issued by police agencies is not gonna gain you your efficiency, your economy of synthesizing the small cell, the neutral host small cell to fill the gaps where the cell towers don't get with the potential to accelerate community broadband. That's, that's beyond the scope that CBPSA of its own accord will put out an RFI for. So this is basically asking the city, who's a member of both Capital West and CV fiber and CBPSA, to say, we want to, you to explore and demonstrate the economy of that, that efficiency of that approach.
So Steve said in a far more technical way what I was about to say, which is, I think the, the piece that's missing and we, we haven't really talked about is the opportunity or the idea of bringing CV fiber into this, too, because you get a separate group that wants to raise money to bring fiber all through central Vermont for cable and that kind of thing. And, and rather than looking at, and, and which can also be used for public safety communications. And so how do you coordinate those efforts so maybe, you know, we don't want to build two fiber lines and, you know, pay for it twice and, and get the synergy? And I think, you know, I have to say, and I'm no expert in this and I'm somewhat late to the conversation, but as I've, I've tried to learn more about it, you know, I, I think that, right, a public safety consultant is gonna look at the public safety needs. And, and I do believe it's even more complex, even the fix for fire, as I'm understanding, isn't as easy as I thought it even might be. But, you know, police run digital radios, fire doesn't, and you've got, you know, and they rely on the mutual aid for all around, so unless all these small towns switch to digital, which, you know, I mean, there's a lot more to it than I think we understand. A week from Friday, I'm, I and all the public safety people in Barry and Montpelier and the other, the city manager are gonna have our follow-up conversation, and I certainly am, I, I got mixed reactions on simulcast, whether that was really what people wanted from the people in that room. So, and was it, was that a real benefit to the cities or was that more of a benefit to the smaller towns? So I, you know, I'm, I'm still there. I don't know whether it's an RFI, I don't know if it's, you know, I don't know the mechanism, but I think the, the, I, I support the sentiment here, which is at least urge our representatives on these boards to find the best way to integrate the services so that we're, we're, you know, it so happens we're gonna be building them both out at the same time, just by luck of timing, so let's not blow it. That's, you know, let's maximize the benefit.
Donna? I mean, central Vermont fiber, I mean, part of that RFI, I mean, I was so impressed with the microtransit, how many vendors they came out, and then they came and visited, I mean, we learned so much, it was just amazing. And then you make that decision, and then you hire somebody to implement it and make it happen, but.
Well, like I said, I'm not dictating a process.
So much different, I mean, an RFI is so much different than a RFP, it's just amazing. I was so impressed.
I think you need a plan before you can put...
Fair enough, other thoughts, what, which I should do, Steve?
Bill, I, could I just, I, I can't hear you very well, your microphone is a little...
Yours is low frequency, it's really inaudible, nearly.
But was the bottom line that you support a plan?
Yes, my suggestion was that, you know, I, like I said, I don't know the best mechanism, you know, all things being equal, I tend to lean toward a consultant, but that's without having studied all the alternatives. I hear the merit in the RFI, but I think the proposal before you is urge our representatives on CV fiber and our representatives on CVPS. We can't tell either of those boards what to do. All we can say is we urge you to find the best way to work together and decide yourselves, whether it's an RFI or a consultant or whatever it might be. You know, I, I think if we start dictating the means and methods, we're gonna get way out over our skis. But I think just saying, going on record saying, we'd like to see a holistic approach between the two of you, I think would be a good statement from the city. That's my take.
That makes sense to me, you know, leave it to the, to groups to figure out how to coordinate, but just recognizing that there's this really unique opportunity to collaborate and, and to think broadly about the needs before the, before the CBPSA.
And it has three-month reporting thresholds in the language, for you to get reports back from both CV fiber and CBPSA in three months.
Is there a motion that could be made to that effect? Or unless an interview is not there, and that's okay, too, but...
I just don't know if it's appropriate for me to move it if I'm the council member.
If you're the rep.
Urge yourself to do something.
It just, it feels wrong, but I'd be happy to do it.
I don't think it...
I don't know that it violates any rules, it just feels weird.
You could, you could move that, instead of directing the reps to do that, you could say the city council supports...
Direct myself.
Supports this, a cooperative effort between CV fiber and CV...
PSA.
PSA, and urges the two boards...
I'd certainly urge that.
Cooperate.
Are you gonna come?
Yeah, do, do we even need a motion?
So, I, I, I really am struggling with the way these meetings are scheduled because I don't have the bandwidth to keep up with 30 emails a day about timing, and I'm, I think I sent an email to everybody requesting doodle polls because, like, I have a full-time day job and I'm on call and I...
You should...
And calling in in every other context is at least an option on occasion, and so I totally appreciate that I haven't been there, but I have to work, I have medical providers I have to see, and I can't, I can't read 30 emails a day to figure out when a meeting is gonna be.
I think probably, we should probably have a motion if we're gonna do, if we're...
Sure, what was your word in there, Bill?
I've already come out of my brain now. I can't think twice.
Holistic.
I think the, alright, I would say that the city council of Montpelier wants to go on record as supporting a cooperative effort between CV fiber and CVPSA to look at a regional-wide communications network that, that, you know, uses the fiber structure in its most efficient means, and, or, you know, urges the two groups to work together cooperatively to accomplish that goal.
Couldn't have said it better myself, Bill.
Yes, you could.
That's my motion.
I'm sorry, but I think that's a little narrow, there is First Net, CV fiber is only one player, there's First Net.
So I would say and other fiber providers.
Another communications providers.
So Connor, is that, is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Okay, making it sort of broad like that, okay.
Kind of a broad view.
So what I understand is that Connor just made that motion.
Yes.
I'm seconding it.
Okay, great. Is there further discussion? All, okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and thank you for bringing this to our attention. I think this is a great opportunity.
Thank you for your attention.
Yep, for sure.
This is a long battle.
Okay, alright, I am hopeful still that we're gonna get out of here at 10, just gonna say that. Chapter seven, the ordinances.
So you're hoping the public...
Oh, yes, so we're gonna open, is this, this is the second public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, wow. I don't know where I was from the first one, okay. So we're gonna open the second public hearing on chapter seven. Any comments on chapter seven?
My comment is that we're all happy with it on July 10th, and I am still happy with it, so as soon as, as soon as the public hearing, I'll, I'll go out there.
Donna?
It's just so refreshing to see it reduced and getting concentrated. This is great. Thanks, staff, Jamie, whoever did it.
Okay, I'm gonna be a pain and say that I have some comments. I know, I'm sorry. Are we, so, okay, seven, 400 D and E, have we made garbage the equivalent of recyclables? Let's see if I can... Their, their definitions are basically the same, and then it becomes relevant again in seven, 401, the title says vehicles carrying garbage or trash, but I, but we just took out the definition for trash, so perhaps that should say garbage or recyclables?
Um, and...
Yes?
The definition of recyclable, that's not right.
Yeah, I, I, that felt a little funny.
I was like, that's the definition of garbage, which may well be in practice what is happening because no one overseas is buying our recyclables anymore, but...
Yeah. Right, exactly, practically speaking, that's maybe true.
Practically speaking, that may be what's happening, but I would assume that we as a city don't want to define recyclables the same as we do trash.
I apologize that I did not catch the, these things the first time through.
There's also gonna be, you know, is noted in the cover sheet, there's gonna be some changes coming based on state law and composting and amendments to chapter three regarding toxic chemicals, so we may need to come back to this chapter at some point anyway.
Fair enough, I'm happy to make these changes now with the flag that maybe we can revisit it. I have one other thing, which is, I just didn't, mm, okay, in seven dash two, that's going backwards a bit, but they use the word swell, and I'm just unfamiliar with that as a garbage-related term. Like oful?
Awful.
Well, awful, but then, at least that's like near it in that sentence, I think, but I didn't know what a swell was.
Seven dash two, you said?
Yes, seven, se...
And the new two, or the old two?
Any swell house oful?
Uh, yeah, the new seven dash two, surface deposits of offensive or unhealthful materials. It's right in that first sentence, uh, uh, yeah, it is in the first sentence. Any swell.
Could it, could it be meant to be swill? Not that that's all that much clearer?
To become larger and rounder than usual, to cause to increase in size...
I actually looked up the, like, all the definitions of swell, and none of them made sense.
Swill.
Okay. So, in any case, that's, I just want to...
I, I think that might be appropriate there, like, if stuff, like, spreads outside. I mean, it's not how I would use it, but I'm, based on all of the, the older contexts.
Well, why don't we take a look at it before we have to revisit this again?
Yeah, okay. Again, I'm happy to, to approve this with the changes for now and knowing that we're gonna come back to it.
Just checking in, do you, do you have a suggestion for how to change the definition of recyclable?
Nope, I don't.
I think we should revisit it, then.
You think we should what?
Send it back and...
Before we approve it?
Yes.
So maybe we're not necessarily, like, approving it into...
That's good, that certainly seems like a good thing to have a definition of.
So having another hearing on chapter seven, then? Okay. For that, for that matter, then, I, in seven dash one, I was a little worried that we were banning the possibility of worm-casting boxes, you know, sometimes people compost inside their homes, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't preventing that from
Are worm-casting boxes government-sanctioned? Is that covered under that last...
I don't know. Jamie tells me that she has the definition of recyclables, by the way. But in any case, it sounds like maybe we're gonna have another hearing on this.
Yes.
And that's fine. Okay, so any comments from the public on this chapter? Okay, so I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I think we're probably setting another public hearing for this one.
Next meeting?
At the next meeting. Oh, actually, I think we need a motion to that effect, though.
So moved.
Great. Further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you all. Alright, so we have an, an update on protests from Captain Martel? Yeah? I wanna get your title right.
Good evening. So recently, myself and some of the department heads, specifically Tom Hurdle from Public Works and Bob Gallant from the Fire Department, got together, along with Sue, City Manager's office, to discuss...
Can you speak a little better?
Yeah, better. To discuss the ongoing concerns that have been expressed with the recent protests. We've had two this summer that have been disruptive to different parts of the downtown area, specifically back in July at State and Taylor and near the State House, and then a week or so ago, right at State and Main.
I think you still need to be closer to the...
Better? Okay. So we've received lots of different feedback from citizens, business owners, and people that frequent Montpelier. Some of it has gone both ways, to be quite honest. We've seen a significant amount of frustration from people that are trying to travel through the city that were upset by these protests and disruptions. My thought was to get other department heads on board with trying to understand what our ability to respond and what our assets and resources are at the police department. On any given day, there's not more than three, maybe four officers working. These protests, the most recent one probably had in upwards of 30 youth in various ages, from maybe as young as 13 up to probably early twenties. The earlier July protest had active protesters in the street, somewhere in a neighborhood of probably 15 to 20. So when you do the simple math there, it's not a good number of officers to protesters. I'm not saying that these protesters are violent or have a propensity to become violent, but they are committing some act of civil disobedience by blocking the roadway. So if I have, this past Friday, for instance, it was myself, I was fortunate I had three other officers and a detective available... other officers and a detective available. We met with that group, tried to understand what their intent was, the duration, not really negotiating, but there is a negotiation that has to occur with these people to understand what they're trying to accomplish and for us to express what we have to do as, you know, the police and to keep the streets open. It's give and take. I'll be honest with you, you have to assess the situation from our standpoint of what we can feasibly do with three to four police officers and somewhere between any given time, fifteen to, we've seen protests that have probably up to a hundred people. What it comes down to from the police perspective is what assets, what officers can I quickly bring to the area to facilitate removal? We can ask for compliance, we can order for compliance. If they refuse to comply, then we have to, basically it's riders refusing to leave. When they're blocking the street, it constitutes what is disorderly conduct by state statutes when you impede vehicular pedestrian access thoroughfare. To be clear, these are misdemeanor crimes that you, yes, you arrest in Vermont, but you cite and release for misdemeanor crimes unless there's other applicable rules under rule three, which continuation of offense could be one of those. But typically, these people would be asked to leave and then escorted from the roadway, issued a citation to appear at court, and/or go through a restorative process if that's deemed the most appropriate action, and, you know, it moves forward from there. Typically, we don't physically drag people away, but we have had instances of protests where we have had to, and that even a passive resistance changes things from a law enforcement perspective. If a person is compliant, usually it's a one-on-one situation. If a person becomes passively non-compliant, it then, for the safety of the officers and the safety of the protester or the disobedient person, it requires no less than three, suggested four officers if they have to physically drag, for lack of a more...
Carry.
Carry, drag, yeah, remove that person. So you've now, you know, taken what might have been, you know, three or four officers handling several people to now three or four officers dealing with one person in particular. So what I asked for the other department heads was to be at the ready to the best of their abilities, understanding each of those, the fire and DPW have other core tasks, but to be at the ready if I call, specifically with Public Works, to provide barricades, cones, roadblocks, and personnel to deter traffic, which we have been dedicating law enforcement officers to, which if we're going to have to arrest these people, takes the few officers that I have working, they're now stuck directing traffic around the scene, so I could free them up with use of other city department people, understanding Fire Department is not part of their core mission, but if they have officers or firefighters available. I've reached out to other assets. The chief is speaking or will be speaking with area chiefs in Washington County about being able to provide assets. The reality is every situation is different, but most departments are in the same situation. If I call for Barry, I'm going to get maybe one officer, maybe two. I called state police at the last protest, they had three troopers, including the sergeant, and two troopers covering all of Washington County on a Friday. So the reality is there's not this magic pool of officers working in any given community in central Vermont. With planning, and if we know that these protests are coming, we can ramp up our staffing, we can reach out to other area agencies beyond Washington County, and other agencies can plan and have resources available. The last two, I've got to be quite honest, we had very little warning. Actually, Friday, the last one at State and Main, we had no warning, we had no intel at all that they were going to take to the street, they just did it. So that is tough to plan for, obviously, when you don't know this. We do know, the group has made it known to us, and through their social media sites, that they are planning to ramp up this process of protest. Specifically, September twentieth through the twenty-seventh has been targeted as a worldwide time period for protests that, you know, I'm sure most of you have probably seen or heard, but it centers around fossil fuels and climate change and all those concerns that they have. What makes it a little more complicated is this is a youth-based movement, and it's not complicated that it's youth per se, but if it comes time to have to cite or arrest these youth, it's a little bit of a game changer from our perspective of how we handle anyone that is considered a youthful offender, which is now anyone of the age of eighteen. It's going to mean that it's going to tie up more resources for us. Under statutory law, we're required, if we take one of those youthful offenders into custody, that we turn them over to a guardian. If this is a destination location for people all over the state, mom and dad aren't going to be working down at DMV, they're going to be at all corners of the state, which is going to tie up additional resources, kind of, for lack of a better term, holding on or babysitting these kids until we can turn them over to a guardian or parent. So something to be aware that this action plan coming together is youth-based. I anticipate that it'll be youth from all over the state and perhaps beyond. So we are starting to plan for the September time period, knowing that they've identified September twentieth through the twenty-seventh as key national and worldwide time to call to action. They've also indicated that there'll be more frequent pop-up events any time between then and now.
So my understanding is that you are sort of looking for some kind of clarity from the council about, you know, the, generally speaking, the approach, like should we be arresting people or not, or, do you want to, I'll turn it back over to you, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we have to make a decision based on the totality of the circumstances and what we have for resources at the time. And the general public says, get these people out of the street now. And the reality is, we may not disagree with that, but we have to do it with enough resources so it can be safely done, and that takes time, unfortunately. The city certainly can offer a position on what the council or the city feels is appropriate. Do we want, as a community or as a city, endorse this type of behavior or protest? Or do we want to take a position that the streets have intentions for thoroughfare travel and not protest?
Well, I guess I'll just speak for myself and say that I trust the judgment of the department to evaluate, you know, on a situation-by-situation basis, what is most needed. You know, I think it was, the way the last, most recent protest was handled was great in that, you know, that working together with the protesters did not result in arrests, and it was, and ultimately, you know, they were moved out of the street in time. And I realize that that's an inconvenience for people traveling, but there's, there are some trade-offs there, and I will speak for myself and say that feels, that felt acceptable. So, yeah.
I guess I'm glad to hear that DPW is on board in terms of, you know, if you make a call, like, hey, we need some people to come out, set up cones, that's, I think that's ideal. And the other piece that I would highlight, I mean, I was watching social media, I was getting phone calls, text messages, emails, and I would just highlight to everybody that these protests are an annoyance, yes. Like, it's frustrating, that it's going to take forever to get where you need to go. It can create, you know, potentially dangerous situations if we can't get emergency vehicles through or whatever, but that's kind of the point. And I would hate for all of us to forget that these actions have a purpose, and, you know, the inconvenience that may be experienced for the afternoon that this happens sucks. Let's just be real, it does. It's uncomfortable, it's unpleasant, there is nothing worse than it taking forty minutes to get home, you know, from some point other than Montpelier to get back here. But on the flip side, you know, I'm thirty-four years old, you know, maybe, what, a third halfway through my life at this point, and the folks who are out there in the streets who are showing up and putting up are going to be the ones that are going to be filling our seats and our shoes in the future. And I love that, Captain, that you, you know, sort of talked about, like, we really need to be mindful about, like, they have the right to do this, you know, and it sounds like, based on conversations with other department heads and ways to handle that, you know, I think if that were solidified in terms of like a policy, like, you know, when unannounced protests happen, you know, here are the departments to call for what resources, for what services, obviously, police are in charge of that, but, you know, I think the other important piece as a council that we have to keep messaging is that, yeah, this is uncomfortable, and we have an obligation to keep our city safe, but we also have an obligation to protect people who are out there doing work that they view is similar to what we're doing. They're advocating for the things that they believe in, and frankly, you know, fossil fuels are going to have an impact on all of us. And so what I don't want this to be is sort of not seeing the forest for the trees. So I love that there's already been communications, and if we can get those firmed up into a policy, but I also want to be very clear to people that, you know, we are the state capital, and it is incumbent upon all of us to be aware that, you know, politics impacts every single aspect of our lives, and, you know, kids, like, at thirteen years old, I was not out marching in the streets, I was probably sitting on my butt playing video games and eating Cheetos, you know, but, but it's important that young people are active and engaged and that people are showing up to talk about this, and that we are able, because we have, you know, we have officers out there, we have DPW and other city employees responding, you know, that these be as successful as they can be, both in terms of messaging for them, whatever the message is, but also in terms of public safety, and also are, you know, reaffirming our commitment to civil disobedience to change things.
I think one of the goals of having this conversation today from a staff perspective was to outline the challenges, as Captain said, you know, what the actual resources are, what it actually takes to sort of, you know, round them all up. And I think we got a lot of feedback from places, and again, some people, you know, a lot of complimenting, saying, we appreciate the way you handle it, but certainly from some residents and business owners saying, you know, I can't just stand in the middle of the street, you know, arrest them, get them all out of there, what's, you know, what's, how come you're just letting them do this? They're breaking the law. And, you know, I wasn't here for the last one, but certainly I was on-site for the one before, and that particular group was reasonable and peaceful, and they said we'll be out by a certain time, and they actually were gone, you know, a little bit before then. But, you know, you also, not everyone's as cooperative, and I think, you know, the police have to be able to work with what they're dealing with, but a lot of this is to help you all and the public who's listening and watching understand, it's not as easy as one might think to just round up a bunch of thirty or forty people, arrest them, and that means they all have to be processed, that means they all go through, right, the court system or the prosecuting system, and is that really the best use of the criminal justice system and everything else if we can peacefully resolve the situation? And, you know, people get belligerent, people get, you know, if safety becomes an issue, then by all means, that's the top priority. And, you know, I'll speak for just myself, at the first one, you know, for example, I never had any doubt in my mind that if a fire truck had to come down State Street, that they wouldn't have moved for it.
Sorry, they would not have?
Would have.
They would have?
Yes, that they would have moved. There was, there was no, they weren't going to lie down in front of the fire truck. Have there been other groups that might not do that? Then I think you have to handle those differently. You know, we have to think about all the other responses that we have to the community, including the business interests, and I realize sometimes the protesters don't care about the business interest, but we have to think about all of it, so.
Connor, and then Glenn.
As a union organizer, this is a bit of a tough one for me. I'm usually on the other side of the protest line, but, you know, I think it's probably more, more than public safety, it's more than the inconvenience of businesses. I heard from a few folks who are actually hourly workers in town who lost a paycheck that day, you know, and that's a very real and immediate thing for them and their families.
Right.
So I think, again, taking the approach where we respect their rights, you know, we want to be accommodating to give them an outlet to express those views. I think they're very right as far as climate change being probably the greatest threat to our existence, but at the same time, it did feel like the first one went on a bit too long, and it's very helpful to have this conversation, knowing the limitation of our resources to do that. And one other thing to keep in mind is, sometimes the endgame in this is to get arrested, right? So let's be cognizant of that as well.
Well, and actually, a lot of times, you know, I've seen it, the police ask them if they want to get arrested, and they're actually, you know, there's some that, fine, we'll cooperatively get arrested, but then there's others that won't, and so you just never know who you're dealing with. I think the frustrating part for the community and for the police, and trying to prevent Neil from having to answer all these questions, is we are very active at saying, we'll give you this part of the street, and we'll give you this sidewalk, or of course, there's always the State House lawn, which is sort of built for public, you know, assembly, and even the front of the City Hall. And, you know, the flip side is, no, no, we want to block the traffic, we want to be in the street, we want to be disruptive, and it's like, you could, can't you make your point, you know, as one person posted, I think, on social media, it's like, oh, they're worried about climate change, and we're all stacked up in idling cars because we can't get through, so how's that, you know, so I think it's, it's just a hard thing, and I admire the patience sometimes that the police have with this.
Glenn?
I like the way that the police has handled the protests so far. I'm generally in sympathy with the goals of the protesters that I've seen, and I think that it is interesting to see the growing movement here and around the world on this. What I hear you saying, Captain Martel, is that sometimes, for example, going ahead and trying to arrest everyone who's in the streets would be a slower way to clear the street than talking with the protesters and trying to work out a way that avoids arrests, especially, for example, if, once you have arrested those thirteen and fifteen-year-olds, you then have to drive them to Rattleboro or wherever.
At the very least, we're going to hold on to them until we can reach a guardian or parent that will say, do X, Y, or Z, or come claim them.
Yes, so I guess I really appreciate that, and I think I would, as much sympathy as I have for the protesters, I think that it makes sense that the police's job and the city's job is to keep the streets clear for movement, and that you should do that job the best way you can, and I can see that you have better ideas how that should work than I do, at least, so thank you.
I mean, it is a negotiation session. In all honesty, it's try to achieve what they want to achieve and what we need to achieve, and come to a somewhat happy medium between the two. That's essentially what we did with them when they took over State and Main. At that time of day, with that volume of traffic, I'm like, this is not going to work, because they wanted it for an hour and a half to two hours. And I said, you know, what can we do to resolve this? You can't stay here, you know, it's the old, you don't have to go home, but you can't stay here anymore. So through discussions, and Sue Allen was there as well, we negotiated that they would march to the Capitol, we would give them the road, we would assist them to get there, but they had to get out of the intersection, they had the intersection for about a half hour, and then they, you know, so there was some compromise. It's a lot like a marriage, you know?
I also am curious, I mean, it sounds like there are general plans and no specific plans shared with the city or police. Is there any, for example, can we ask people to go through the formal process of shutting down a street without approval?
We can ask, obviously, there's that process, I think, that kind of circumvents what their plan is.
It is called civil disobedience.
Right. Yeah. They're very well organized, I mean, to be clear, they have trainings on a frequent basis, they have meetings at least monthly, and they're, if you follow their social media, they're having meetings weekly now to rally support, to spread their, you know, what they think is important, and to organize. And our experience has been, not so much with this group, but most of the groups are very similar, and they have crossover people. They have predetermined people that will do X, Y, and Z. They always have liaisons to law enforcement that will speak, so I'm not communicating or we're not communicating with multiple people. They're organized, but they don't claim to have a hierarchy in the organization, it's a consensus decision on whether they'll move or not, and that liaison communicates back and forth with the group to obtain consensus. But they do have organizational structure, they use the group as kind of a cover for that, and, but they're fairly well organized, and they have planned in advance of what their actions will be most of the time.
Donna?
I have just one concern. So far, everyone seems to agree with the protesting issues, and my concern is that when we have the groups that maybe aren't so agreeable to our ideas, that we treat them the same, and hence, the more you have that written down and clear of policy procedures, and I think the safer we are to be treating everybody fairly.
Yeah, it's a valid concern, if you, even with the same group, if you give them two sets of rules on two separate occasions, it sends very mixed messages. So, I mean, saying that, but also understanding that every situation... So, I mean, saying that, but also understanding that every situation is somewhat different, the location is different, the time of day could be different, the number of available officers, there's a lot of different things that have to be taken into consideration before making your final determination, for sure.
Thank you. Any other comments?
We're going, we're going a little back in time now, but there was, you know, 10 years or so ago, we had two different visits from the Westboro Baptist Church, and for those who are here, we provided the same protection for them and worked with them at where you're going to be and what you're going to disrupt, and that kind of thing. And in that case, it was the counter protesters that we had to manage more so, you know, because there was bigger crowds opposing them than they were actually there.
All right.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you for the update, and we'll just see how it goes. Okay, last item, we have 10 minutes, I don't think we're going to make 10 o'clock, but...
Depends how fast you go.
I know, exactly. All right, so, review of the strategic outcomes from 2018, 2019.
Well, I was going to go through each one individually and discuss, I think this should only take about an hour and a half.
I had a terrible time reading it.
Well, so, what I was going to say, very briefly, actually, is you've got a lot of data here, and part of it is, you know, your feedback, which we don't have to get tonight, but feel free to talk to me individually. But as you know, this is our first, this was from last year, so it was our first year with the new strategic plan format, the first year using the Invisio software, and, you know, we, we now have a second, a newer strategic plan, and we are trying to improve our use of the system from what we've learned, and our goal is to get some pretty regular reports to you. If you recall, one of the items in this year's plan was a check-in every couple of months about how we're doing, so we thought we should at least start with how we finished up last year, is a good launching point. And we will seek to condense this information, but it is all here, if anyone wants to read through it, and it's automated, and, like I said, we will, you know, I don't think we'd spend a lot more time on it unless there was anything of substance that people had. We did do it, and we want to make sure you saw how we did.
Is this the kind of thing that we would get, like, in this form?
Something like it.
Okay, something like it. But it may change.
We hopefully, a little more concise.
Okay. It may also be helpful to, you know, between one update and the next, to, if there was a way to, I mean, part of it might just be like getting used to the format, but being able to see easily, okay, so this part has changed, this part has not, and for that kind of quick comparison, just going to put that out there. Jack, do you have a thought?
Yeah, I don't want to go into great detail, but as an overall question, I'm kind of curious about the methodology. So how is it determined, for instance, that 72.73% of a particular goal is on track and 27.27% of the goal is completed?
So, the overall goal is calculated through the software based on how the activities have been rated. So the activities are rated by the, you know, there's a responsible person for each activity, and, you know, to some extent, there's a bit of our, you know, okay, you know, if it's done, it's done, it's 100%, but, you know, a little bit as well, we've done this and this, we're about halfway through, so we'd estimate we're halfway through. If it's a construction project, it's a little easier. Then there's some, you know, we have some in there, like, reduce opioids while you're either zero or, I mean, like, there's no, there's no percentage you can apply to that. But the overall goal then takes all the composite of all the items in it and calculates it, and says that's...
Other questions about this? Donna?
I like the second half, it starts out on the cover page, it has September 2019 on it, and it has those colored bars, on-track, progress, right there, real clear, that, at least I could pick out some things and start focusing in, whereas the first half, there's words.
Okay, yeah.
I got lost, really.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Uh, yeah.
It was a, I'll speak with, it was a lot of information to try to plow through, and I would ask you to consider what other format can make that available for review and comment by the public. I know that I might suggest, you know, there's an Acrobat, a PDF format, some of which where people could put comments in, maybe have that on the web, and a place under each page where you could take some comments, because it's going to be too laborious to go through such a document, but I found some things highly suspect about the progress towards affordable housing, because, you know...
So again, the issue is, yeah, and I agree with that, to the point that it's going to calculate the specific tasks, you know, the goal of accomplishing affordable housing, it's going to come out, you know, the council laid out, we're going to get four things done this year, or whatever they were, and if those are all done, it might say that we did 100%, but it really just means we did 100% of what we set out to do this year. So there is some nuance there, you know?
Can that context be at the head of those pages?
So, we are, like I said, this was our first time through, it's a good tool, it's really an internal tool, we're trying to figure out how to do the best reporting, and it does have a live dashboard on the website that people can follow at any time, or at certain update times or something like that, so.
Great, thank you. Further comments? Okay, so, moving on to council reports, I'm going to start over with Jack, if you're ready?
I am not ready.
Okay, just kidding, who is ready? Donna, go ahead.
Well, I wanted you to know that two committees are taking ordinance 10 very seriously, not only for skateboards, but also for bicycles, and for e-scooters and e-bikes, and that is both the Complete Streets and the M-TIC. I really am looking at that, really interesting discussion right now.
Thank you.
And the other thing is, we're getting some data from, on bikes and Peds, people have asked what our numbers are, from the Regional Planning Commission, they have cameras they'll put out, and they haven't done any for us for a while, so I've asked them, and I'll let you know if and when it gets done.
Great. Connor?
All right, just thanks to the city staff for mediating the motorcyclists and farmers last week, and it seemed like it was a marriage made in heaven, so, thanks for doing that.
Glenn?
I, yeah, gosh, I feel like I have all kinds of general thoughts and no specific thoughts, so maybe I'll just hold it to tomorrow morning at Baguio's, 8:30 to 9:30. Oh, and just one other thing, that I've really been enjoying, walking around the city this season with no snow and beautiful weather, and I have been very much looking forward to the pedestrian and bike bridge over the North Branch, and really appreciating the progress that I see there. There's a, there's a beautiful robin's egg blue excavator right there now, that my four-year-old nephew appreciated very much, and they're putting in curbs, it's great, you should all go down to the side of the drawing board and watch the progress at that spot.
Great. Ashley, or Jack? Pass.
I was looking for the details, I'm not finding what I wanted to point out to anyone who's available, that I think it's tomorrow and Friday, that there's going to be work putting in the rain gardens over at the state employees' credit union, and anyone who is available to spend some time on a beautiful day digging in the dirt, their efforts will be welcome to do that.
Thanks for reminding me. I just want to highlight that we have had some public hearings recently, and want to thank people for coming out to those public hearings about the transportation or the traffic changes of Berry Street, Main Street, lots of great input on that, really interesting conversation. And then, and then also thanking the realtors for coming out to that, the public hearing there about the energy ordinance, and then just want to highlight again that we have another public hearing on the energy disclosure ordinance coming up this coming Tuesday at 6:00 here in this room. It's going to be a little background history, and then talking about, well, actually, just like getting people's ideas, feedback, input for moving forward. And, yeah, so there's that, and then there's also, we're planning, we are planning a transportation...
September 18.
Day. Yeah, September 18th is a Wednesday, but we otherwise do not have council, and the idea is we're going to be having presentations from a variety of transportation-related organizations, giving us an update on either what they've been up to, or potential for what they could be doing. And, yeah, there's no action items to be taken that day, it's just, you know, just an update, but obviously, everyone is invited, and hopefully, that'll be a productive conversation. So I think that is it for me. We have to be early next week, next meeting? Oh, yeah, we have the picture, we're taking a picture next time, sorry, I have lost. Yeah, John, Julie?
Oh, just that I got back from DEFCON, and this time, we had Vermont-style voting machines, so took them apart, and I know them inside and out now, if anybody has any questions.
Vermont-style voting machines?
Yeah, the ones that, well, a lot of other states use them too, with those really old funky things, you know, that we use to go into the black boxes where the ballots go. Yeah, we hacked them, we got into them, well, to the extent we could, but they had splayed apart on the table. Oh, sorry, anyway, it was great fun, I can tell you all about, not just their vulnerabilities, but what we, what our procedures that mitigate those vulnerabilities are, because we are really doing very well.
That's great. That's pretty exciting.
I think, oh, I have one thing, first of all, a couple things. First of all, I would like to thank our police department for their efforts with the protest, and certainly, my heart goes out to the family of Mark Johnson and our officers, nobody wants to be in that situation, and their families. We obviously, as the mayor said, support a full and complete investigation and want the best. We certainly agree that all public information should be released as soon as it's possible. Even on the day of the event, I was speaking from Maine with Sue, and I said, you know, we've got to get information out, the details, as soon as possible, so that we can reduce speculation, so. But a horrible situation there, and so I appreciate, not that I appreciate that somebody passed away, but I appreciate the people that are doing very hard jobs on behalf of all of us and having to make very difficult decisions, and I thank them for their service. And I would like to introduce Donna Barlow-Kasey, who's sitting there next to Sue. Donna, starting on Monday, will be our acting DPW director, and by the end of August, our acting assistant city manager, she can do double duty, hopefully, we'll be filling those roles pretty quickly, I'll be talking about that, so we're hoping she can at least cover some projects and do all those things. Donna has a long range of experience, including having been a town manager in Milton, she worked with our DPW for about nine months as an operations manager, ran Central Vermont Soloways District for quite a while, and has worked in other, and has a strong background in sustainability and energy issues. So, we're happy to have her back, and happy to have her on board.
Super, welcome. Now, I've got on the agenda here, potential executive session, do we still want to do that?
We shouldn't take too terribly.
Okay. So, is there a motion?
I don't have any.
Do we, any other, I don't think there's any other business, or?
The only reason I'm asking, there, just Stephen is still here, and so I just, on the agenda.
Fair enough. I don't think we have anything left to do, any further comments? Okay. So, we will, if we are going into this executive session, we will not be coming out to take any action, so our meeting will effectively be done, is there a motion to go into executive session?
I vote pursuant to one VSA, section 313, A3, that we enter executive session to discuss the appointment or employment or evaluation of our public officers or employees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.